All right, call this meeting to order, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. County Commission meetings are open to the public. Members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and to request, yeah, to request to speak for public comment, to unmute yourself, dial star six. We do ask that you try and stick to those and mute yourself, please, if you're not, if you're not speaking. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending us an email at eloquentlyoncounty.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Okay, I'm gonna skip down to the agenda here real quick. To avoid meeting disruptions, please, everybody place your phones on silent, please. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner possible. Items may be combined for duration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict the comments based upon viewpoint. Or County Commissioners convening as are their boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Veccor Control Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of, as any of those boards, as indicated by this or separately posted agenda. As a side note, we may take a break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch, if we feel it's necessary. Okay, number one, roll call. So we've got Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Hockaday, and Commissioner Henderson in chambers, and we have got Commissioner Keller on Zoom. Good morning, Vida. Can you hear us okay? It's actually
Good morning, sorry, I had you muted.
No worries. Okay, now we're gonna have the invocation given by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. Our Father in heaven, we call upon you, the Creator of heavens and earth, the Almighty God, the God of all wisdom and all knowledge, the one that knows the future. So we call upon you for this meeting this morning, that your presence may be known. We call upon you that you will grant us your wisdom, your insight, your discernment, and we pray that the truth would come out for every particular item to be discussed. We pray, Lord, that everything will be discussed peacefully and in order, and we pray, Lord, that we will have a continued following of your law, of the land, of our constitution, our Bill of Rights, our Declaration of Independence. Lord, we pray that we will never lose that before us. So, Lord, we commit this time to you. We thank you for hearing our prayer and answering us. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, your son. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, that's worship. Robbie Williams in the pledge, please.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, yeah, I was gonna say, it's, you know, schools, you guys used to do it every day, hopefully, right? Good. Okay, so I'd just like to mention for the record, we have a 10:00 AM time certain. So, moving on to public participation, no action will be taken on any item unless it is properly agendaed. It's anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens, citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. We also have to sign in, please. There's a sign in up there. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Afterwards, please print your name at the clerk's desk. Is there any public participations time for anything that's not on the agenda?
Good morning, my name is Jim Keninger. I'm a resident of Smith Valley. Last night at the Smith Valley Advisory Board meeting, it was announced that there'll be a major meeting in Smith Valley next March the 3rd, 2nd, and Hudbay Mines will be presenting a presentation there. The, I would, I wish that the county had come to Smith Valley much, much earlier in this process, before the lands bill was started and had a big meeting like this, so the public could participate before things were already underway. The fact that they're gonna have this big meeting in this high school, the county's gonna be there as well, means they easily could have done this earlier. I feel that the major stakeholders in this, the residents of Smith Valley, the agriculture people, the farming people, the dairy people, have been left out. And in much of the communication about this Hudbay mine proposal has been obfuscated in minutes and things, some of it's been talked about as Mason Valley. It's all of it's in Smith Valley. The lands bill proposes to put 40 square miles into the hands of the Hudbay Mine Company. The amount of water that they're gonna use, the amount of pollution they're gonna do, is tremendous, and they wanna do a lands bill so they can get this into private property, so they will not be under the federal government's eye, the federal government's regulation. They will not have to do an environmental impact study. This thing is gonna be an abortion, it's gonna be on the land for thousands of years. It's supposed to be only 10 times bigger than the Anaconda Mine, but maybe the fourth largest copper mine in the world. So, I urge this board to think again about entering into a lands bill with Hudbay Mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keninger.
For the record, my name is Elaine St. John, E.L.A.I.N.E., last name S.T. space J.O.H.N. I have a handout that I gave Aaron, and you should all have it, and no surprise, I'm coming to talk to you about elections. So, this is the county regarding 7.02.04 political signs, and currently, as the statute reads, time limits, political signs may be erected no more than 60 days before a primary election. The problem I see with that is we're gonna have to look at that because currently now, because of mail-in ballots, they're sending those out 45 days before an election. So, you're not gonna have a lot of time for people to see your signs. So, I would recommend perhaps rewording it to saying 60 days before ballots are mailed, or perhaps 120 days before the primaries. So, I would like you to please urgently consider this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, essentially. Anybody else want to comment in the chambers or on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom, sir?
All righty.
Moving on, item number five, possible action review and adoption of agenda. Okay, this time, is there anything that needs to be pulled or moved? And if not, all the entertainment motion for approval. Mr. Chair, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and a discussion. A public comment? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, the motion passes 5-0. Okay, we are going to skip to item number seven A for presentation only, and it's gonna be a good one. Presentation, present Deputy Taylor Sheriff with Lyon County Sheriff's Office Life Saving Award. And did I say that right? Sheriff? Shire, okay. I've struggled with that one since the day I saw it. And she's one of our new hires from Highway Patrol, correct? We win again.
Okay, Sheriff Frank Cunnell, for the record, I'm actually gonna give out three different awards today, Deputy Shire's awards, the ones on the agenda, but I got three of them that came up since then. So, we'll talk or start with Deputy Shire. So, you wanna come up through? So, on October, not October, December 23rd of 2021, Deputy Shire responded to a medical call in Silver Springs. She initiated CPR on a, on a patient at that address and continued CPR there until the medics arrived. And the end outcome of the whole deal, because of Deputy Shire's actions, the patient survived. She was transported to the hospital for extended care and actually was released from the hospital after that. So, if it wasn't for her actions on that night, it's very good possibility that that individual would not have made it. So, I'd like to present her with the lifesaving award from the Sheriff's Department. This is her first one, but I'm sure she'll probably get more after this. Next one is another lifesaving award, Deputy Sean Lee. Just come up through for me. So, Sean responded similar situation, January 8th, to a medical call in Dayton. He had initiated CPR on a patient there at that address that he responded to, and because of his actions, he was able to perform CPR until medics arrived. Medics arrived, same outcome, medics transported, persons released, if anyone cares. I can't say enough about these men and women that are on the street. Nine times out of 10, we get to the medical call before even full staff from fire stations. And these are just two individuals that, in my opinion, went above and beyond and did what was right and, and helped the citizens of this, this county. And there's a number of instances, and I wanna say, appreciate the, the fact that my sergeants and liege attendants are recommending these people for lifesaving awards, because if they didn't do that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know it. Because if people say, oh, it's part of your job, or it is part of our job, but we do it every day, 24/7, and I can't say nothing about that. So, and I know both of you guys fought for fan clubs with you, so appreciate that, too. Thank you very much. The next one, I'd like to have retired Captain Sean Plant come up here. So, Sean, smarter than the rest of us, he did 26, something like years, and decided to hunt and get out. So, I can't thank Sean enough for what he did for me in this department over the last couple of years. A lot of stuff that he ran by jail division for me. And I called him my techno geek, because technology-wise, Sean was responsible for looking into and getting put into place. And we got a lot of technology in our detention facility, body scanner, a bunch of other stuff and everything that, that we wouldn't have if it wasn't for him. I just, I visited with the other day, and, and he's going stir crazy because it's not working anymore, but, but he's finding ways to entertain himself. It's kinda interesting. I won't tell you what they are, but it's, it's interesting. So, I wanna present Sean with the distinguished service medal for all of the stuff that he did for this agency over his 26-year career. Since he's here, I gotta get one more recognition. Captain, would you come up here, please? I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Sean's wife on the spot. If it wasn't for this young lady right here, we would not be where we're at, turn hiring and recruiting people. I mean, she's done a phenomenal job. She's one person that's solely responsible for all recruitment and stuff that we're doing. I mean, if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't have been able to hire 14 people in the last six months. She's actively involved in getting more people on board, and she shows up to work every day, comes to my office and says, I gotta push these guys hard, we're gonna get more people on board. So, if it wasn't for Kathleen driving her, her desire to try to help things make better, we'd be where we're at today. So, I just wanna say thank you very much.
I'd like to just take up the nets, get some pictures with your folks and their medals, all right? Come down and then get some pictures of their families and sheriffs. All right, I'll be on now. One of the, where'd the cat ones go? One of the each or a half, the glow's not working. All righty, moving on to item.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
If I, if I may, I just wanted, so, sitting in this room, between retired Captain Clanton and current Captain Johnny Smith, we are at the tail end of people that started shortly after me in my career with Lyon County. And I just wanna recognize, when I first started in the sheriff's office in 1985, nobody retired from Lyon County. It was a stepping stone. But you came to work in Lyon County, you went to post, and then you were snatched up by somebody bigger and better. When we first started, we were making about a dollar, 10 above minimum wage. Our deputies qualified for food stamps if they were married and had kids. That's what it was in the mid 80s to where we are today. So, I congratulate Captain Clanton. We have a, a long relationship. The stepfather and I were dear friends who worked for us for a good number of years. Sean came on following his dad's footsteps. Johnny started as a control room officer before he was even old enough to be a deputy. And as soon as he turned 21, he was out there running the track, trying to get, get hired on. I just wanna recognize that we are now an agency in law enforcement and throughout the county, where people are staying. People are making an effort to be part of a community, to be part of Lyon County, and are making a career in Lyon County. Where early on, that wasn't the case. When I first hired on, a guy named Austin Lucas retired from Lyon County, was six years. He'd been an LA County deputy before, moved up here, did some work for us. He was up in firmly, and he retired with the six years of Nevada Purse, just to add to his time, and then he stayed on as a reserve and helped run the range up in firmly and those things. But we didn't have anybody as that hung around. So, just nice to see the Rock the Game guys and gals to stay in the agency and pull in a full career in Lyon County. So, my hat dropped.
And it's, it's good to see him recognize good people, too. So, like I said, I know Deputy Shire has not been on with us very long at all, and it's, it's good to see that she's making her mark on the county. All right, item 7B, presentation only to recognize Greg Smith for his positive attitude and willingness to serve as the acting wastewater superintendent, bring the utilities department time of need. David Bruketa.
Chairman Gray, Commissioners, David Bruketa for the record, thank you. Frank and his team is a hard act to follow, but, you know, the wastewater crew, a lot of recognitions, they do a lot of things behind the scenes. And Greg Smith, who's on Zoom with us under Gregory M. Smith, about nine months ago, well, Greg's been with us Lyon County about a year and a half, came from another wastewater team to join our team. And about nine months ago, you know, we had an opening for a wastewater superintendent, and Greg stepped into this role. It's a very administrative type position and role, takes on a lot of responsibility because of requirements under the Nevada Administrative Code and the NDEP reporting. And so, it was a new role to Greg, but he, he, he ended up with multiple regulatory issues, and he was able to deal with them head-on with a positive attitude and find resolve to be able to work with them. And I wanna thank him for his efforts and what he's done. So, I'd just like to recognize Greg Smith with the Spotlight Award from the Utilities, and Greg is online. He can raise his hand so everyone can see him there.
Hey, Greg, thank you. All righty, item 7C for presentation. Mr. Smith, would you like to say anything? He's, he's muted. We're trying on this end, too. All right, Jeff, we can unmute him from this end?
No, we can't.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Greg, we got some tech issues here. Can you figure out how to unmute it from your end?
Chairman Gray, while we're waiting, I'd just like to thank Mr. Smith for his hard work and expertise. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I am back here. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was gonna speak. But thank you, it was a, it was a great learning curve for me, and anything I can do in the future or any time to help out, I'd be more than happy to. It was a, it was a great learning curve for me. I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you for rising to the challenge and helping us out. We really appreciate it. Mr. Hockaday, Mr. Henderson.
I just appreciate him getting, getting out there and doing the job that needed to be done. Outstanding.
Yeah, Greg, we certainly appreciate what you do. Sometimes, you know, the, the water and sewer departments aren't the glamour jobs and don't get things, but you're very important to us, and thank you for what you do to our residents.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Right. Now, we'll move on to item 7C for presentation only to recognize Lyon County Human Services Staff, John Davis, and Yarrington Senior Center Volunteer, Richard Ralston, for the example of the service to the seniors of the Yarrington Senior Center. And that's gonna be Sheila.
Good morning, Sheila Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, this morning, we wanted to recognize both John Davis, our part-time food specialist at the Yarrington Senior Center, and one of our regular volunteers, Richard Ralston. And much like what David was sharing, and somebody stepping into a new role or helping out, our senior centers run on skeleton crews, and that is how they are scheduled. It is the grant funding and the, the limited funding of the county that we're able to operate with one full-time person in each center, which is our supervisor. And if you guys recall, back in December, we congratulated Susan Coddingham on her retirement. We just recently were able to fill that position, which we're really excited about. But in that two-month timeframe, John Davis, who typically works four hours as a cook, really stepped up to the plate, because in addition to being short, our one full-time staff member there, life happens. So, our other three staff members, illness, life, things of that nature, over two months period of time, you can imagine some folks were out. And he really ensured that we had coverage, that we were always able to stay open. And then also, a learning curve for him was he actually had to prepare full meals 100% on his own, which was new for him. And when you consider homebound meals plus in center meals, and sometimes 200 meals a day. So, he did an amazing job, and he could not have done it without Richard Ralston, the volunteer. And this volunteer was so amazing in our time of need. He was actually checking the schedule and paying attention to the menu and identifying which days had heavier counts and making sure he was there for full shifts on the days that required it. And he took all of that initiative on his own as a senior volunteer in that center to make sure that we had the support we needed. So, the two of them, we are very grateful for, and we wanted to recognize all their hard work. And then also congratulate Yarrington Senior Center for having their senior center manager now. She's on week two, so we're very excited, and so are we. They might be on Zoom, I think I see.
Anything you two stars would like to say?
Just happy to do it. Glad we were needed to be, it's good to be needed, and it was a lot of fun. Good people to work with. Yeah, I think everybody here is on overtime all the time anyway. They're overworked. I think they're doing a great job here. And I'm Richard. Yeah, these people are outrageous. They do the work of, you know, double. They could use double the staff, and they really put in some hard work. Thank you.
John, Richard, thank you guys so much for what you guys do. It's a, I've, I've been out there and ridden along with, and I just saw somebody hit John. Better poke that face in there now, so we know who it was. But, yeah, I've done the ride-alongs with you guys, and you guys, it's more than just providing meals. It's checking on these folks, making sure that they have a connection to the outside world and making, you know, there's been several instances over the years where you guys have shown up and people have needed help. And that's not just your center, but, you know, throughout the county. So, thank you, guys. It's a vital role you guys play. I'll open up to the Commissioners now, if anybody wants to say anything, and we'll actually go to Commissioner Keller first, since I forgot her last time.
I see how you are. I stay home and you just forget me. Anyways, no, I, I just wanna say thank you to all the volunteer hours that these guys put in. It, it means a lot to our communities and, and in every community. And so, I wanna thank you both for, for everything that you've done and stepped up and done for your community, and that's pretty much it.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Just wanna thank you, gentlemen, very mu, for everything, and I know you mean a lot more to the people that you're serving there, and they're greatly appreciative as well, I'm sure. So, thank you, guys, very, very much.
You're welcome. As the, as the old Commissioner here, I honestly can say we definitely appreciate everything that the senior volunteers there do for us. Thank you very much.
Is your meals on wheels going okay?
Yeah, my wife gets it to me all the time.
Nice. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I, I just wanna add my thanks to you guys as well. I, food and, and food security is one of the most important services that we can provide, because if somebody has to go hungry, they, the rest of their life is, you know, they, they can't function. So, we certainly appreciate what you do to taking care of this very basic human need. So, thank you very much.
Any further comments, anybody? All right, hey, thanks again, guys. We are now gonna move on to Commissioners and County Manager Reports. So, we'll go to actually Commissioners' comments. Start with Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Attended the Fermi City Council Meeting via Zoom, appreciated the State of the City Report by the Mayor Roy Edgington, and shout out to Nikki Bryant. She was up there, drove up and, and gave a wonderful presentation, and appreciate her time outside of the normal workday, showing up and, and just being a voice and advocating for her, for her department. So, well done to Ms. Bryant. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
Good morning, everybody. You know, I actually pawned off a couple of my duties last week, and Commissioner Henderson actually filled in for me. As most of you know, I've, I've had a rough week and a half, haven't felt too well, but I'm on the mend. So, I'm, I'm happy to be on Zoom today, and just hopefully, we can have a, a good meeting moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things, I'll try to be brief. I attended the Nevada Association of Counties Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee meeting on January 28th. NACO has hired a new resource, natural resource manager, who's will be starting at the end of this month. Talked about Talked about greater sage grouse plans and the, the committee recommended that the board submit a letter and I'll talk about that when I talk about the NACO Board of Directors. Still concerned about possible definitions regarding the waters of the United States, comments are due on that February seventh. And again, NACO submitting a letter. I mean, the preferred for Nevada is the Kennedy opinion and the rapidest decision regarding what is or what is not waters of the United States. I made several reports about the NASA proposed withdrawal in North River Valley. Apparently NASA received a letter from our congressional delegation and the next day, Knight County received the phone call inviting them to a new meeting. Funny how that works, that and then the Fallon Range Trading Complex. That may be in the twenty twenty-three Defense Authorization Bill. And from what I understand, the Navy's acting like they're gonna get whatever they want, so we'll, we'll see what happens with that. I also attended the NACO Board of Directors meeting, tried to sit in and, and, you know, for Commissioner Keller and but I hope you're getting better soon. NACO installed their new officers for, for twenty twenty-two. Commissioner Lucy of Washoe County will be the president, Commissioner Higbee from Lincoln County is the president-elect. And Supervisor Giomi from Carson City will be the vice president. We had a presentation from Senator Masto's office. One of the things that, that they focused on was community project funding, which is the nice new name for earmarks. And how their office can help us and, and we have a couple items on our agenda that we will, we'll talk about that later on. I also attended the Mount House Advisory Board meeting Tuesday night, they are really expressed the, the need for a community center out there, I know we're gonna talk about that later as well. And also some, some parks equipment, but they're working on that. And I attended the Dayton Regional Advisory Board last night, I, I actually zoomed into that. And I, I just want to again, thank all the members of our advisory boards for all, all the work you guys do, because that certainly helps me do my job more efficiently. And Mr. Chair, that's really all I have at this point, I'm sure there's other comments I'll make later on during the agenda, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday.
A few things here, the south end of District Five, Smith Valley is very appreciative that we're gonna get wifi down there, kind of move into the new century here. Been a while, but at least we'll be able to have some Zoom meetings for our, our advisory board. And maybe even later on, we can work in a commissioner meeting down there, since we'll be able to have something, but that is hopefully on the schedule in the future. So that people in the south end of the county can actually attend the commissioner meetings like we are up in the north end of the county. Also, subject is brought up that to March at seven PM, multipurpose room at Smith Valley School. We will be having the Hud Bay presentation for the advisory board meeting. All those that are interested in getting their presentation and learning what they plan on doing to this part of the county, please feel like you're definitely welcome to come and ask questions. And that's about all I have for right now, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Okay, I've got a couple items, actually I want to touch on Hud Bay also, I'm gonna ask for that to be put on a, probably the next agenda discussion. If we can get somebody from Hud Bay to come here and do a presentation on what they're proposing. Cause as far as I know, we have never had anybody from there presenting it, we've had a discussion on at least once before. But the plan at that point was nebulous, it was ill-defined. And as far as I know, at this point, it's not unless, you know, I may be corrected later on today, but it's not in our lands bill that we've been discussing, because it's, we don't know anything about it, so I'd like to know what's going on there. Big thing again, and I'm gonna keep harping on this until NDOT or somebody listens. Another three-car accident in Dayton, right there by DG, right there in that hot zone between Fort Churchill and, and Dollar General. They've gotta listen, we need something to control traffic there. And I'm at the point now where maybe we as the county figure out something that we do, I mean, we've brought money, we've offered money, you know, to, at the table to help put in something, anything. But this is getting ridiculous and we also had a, even though it was relatively minor accident, it was a one-car vehicle, but it did shut down Dayton Valley Road a few nights ago. The gentleman did, was air backed out and in pretty beat up shape, so we, we gotta do something. But so far, NDOT, you know, they made a big show putting their signs out there, you know, touting the number of deaths in Lion County, all of Lion County. You know, for twenty, twenty twenty, those signs were here today, gone tomorrow and don't know if they did any good, hopefully they did. But I was under the impression they were gonna be there a while longer and have other safety messages out there, you know, telling people either slow down or, you know, just something to catch their attention. But this is, like I said, it's only a matter of time before a school bus full of kids coming out of Riverview Elementary gets plowed by somebody that's not paying attention or going faster than they should be, because they weren't slowed at a different point. So we gotta do something about that and I want to make sure that's on, on a future agenda again. Other than that, that's all I've got. We got twenty to ten, do you think you'll be able to wrap up your lands bill portion in twenty minutes, for time's certain?
Let me do my county manager report, we'll be good to go.
Let's do it.
Good morning, Jeff Page, County Manager for the record. So I'm glad that Commissioner Gray brought up agenda requests, because we're having some significant challenges with requests from the boards, we want to inform and educate the board as to some of the processes we have to go through. So many instances, you'll ask for something on the agenda, for example, today's meeting. A number of instances that gives us this afternoon, Friday and Monday till five to get the research done. Doesn't always make for the best agenda presentation, so we will be, we will let you know if there's something that is gonna take more time, we'll notify you like we did, for example, with the ARPA funding and, and the, some of the infrastructure funding that's out there. We're waiting until the next meeting, so we have more time to go over the four hundred and sixty-nine page document that came out for the most recent grant funding and give staff time to provide you with information that's not legally easy and simple to understand. But in regards to that, we're also bringing back to you on March third, the current administrative policy that addresses the agenda and how we do that, so that one, the policies in accordance with changes in state law. And then we can educate the board as well as our staff as to what we're doing and why. There have been a number of questions as to, from people in the public over the last year, you know, I sent an email in at, at eight forty-five, why wasn't that part of the record? We're gonna be setting up those boundaries so public knows that anything after five o'clock, the day before the board meeting, we'll do our best to get it to the board, but we may not be able to because of time-sensitive issues of getting a board meeting going, but we will make sure that they're part of the record. Whether they're read in the record or not, that is to the chair and if we have time. The one thing I do want the board to understand is that we have had, we've been very fortunate in Lion County. If you have any basic understanding of what's going on with cybersecurity, we're very fortunate with the three people we have working in IT versus other entities that significantly more, and we have not had any serious problems with our IT infrastructure. And part of it is because our IT folks are on top of what's going on with cybersecurity. So as an example, we have a presentation here in a few minutes from the city of Fermi. We've asked them to email us that presentation, so we can have it in the packet, ready to go, as well as insurance security. If they showed up today with a thumb drive, I'd have to take them over to IT, if IT scanned the thumb drive, there's anybody there, they're off the field. Otherwise, that presentation wouldn't go, because we can no longer take thumb drives from outside the area, outside ones we issued to our staff, because we don't know what, and they may not know what's on there from a security purpose, so you will hear from time to time, people from outside of the county complaining because they couldn't get their presentation and we try to get people notified, send it to us electronically. So we can have it ready to go, if not, be early enough for IT to scan your, your thumb drive to make sure that there's no problem with it. So the board has requested a number of things. As of today, well, we are, as you know, recording on Zoom. When we're done with today, that recording will be put over to our YouTube account. We will have that out and available within, usually within twenty-four hours of, of the board meeting. And we will broadcast it or put out on our website, or our social media pages where people can find it, so if they want to look at what happened today's meeting, they can do so. The wireless connectivity in Smith Valley and Silver City is underway. Silver City's a little bit easier, that it's pretty much go through, I think AT&amp;T are chartered to get it in place. Smith Valley, we're gonna have to work with the school to put up a, a pole on the roof of the library building, so that we can have direct connect to the Justice Center, Justice Center, the old justice court in Smith Valley, so it'll be a few months out before we get that in place, but we're moving forward there. We did notify State Department Advisory Board of your decision on the twentieth. We presented at NNDAs State of the Counties Breakfast on the twenty-sixth. And a Fermi Land Bill off, letter was authored, signed and submitted, as Commissioner Gray came in last Friday morning. We met, we signed it, reviewed it and we, we have submitted it, I just got an email this morning from the folks that had presentation, I'll make sure they get a copy of it as well, I neglected to do that, so I'll get that to them after we get done today. So some things are happening around here that are causing that will cause a problem, but things we're working on. I'm meeting Monday with a variety of staff to bring together information to the board on the seventeenth in regards to EPA's comment grade on the Carson River cleanup, you will be addressing, you'll be asked to review and, and discuss a resolution that we will send to EPA for a comment, yes, sir.
Are you gonna send a copy for you also to Carson Lake Conservancy, so take a tickle?
Correct, and they, they have sent us a, a number of pieces of information that we'll be utilizing to assist us with that as well.
Thank you.
So we had some challenges this last week in community development, was reported to us actually from a planning commissioner of some illegal installations of manufactured homes. The, the location we were told was a little bit off, we have found, discovered that and we have issued a cease and desist order and working with the contractor to get him legal and installing the, the manufactured homes in the legal manner, i.e. having permits, notifying state manufacturer housing, all those good folks, so that we can keep the process going, but they do it right. So there's been some questions in regards to manufactured housing installation. So the board chose not to mandate permanent foundations, existing code gave us that, that authority, but more importantly required that anything other than a permanent foundation had to be engineered. So we have been dealing with that issue, that has created some consternation. People, Commissioner Henderson, I appreciate your email, the question that we sent back an email and talked with staff. We're not mandating a permanent foundation, we are mandating what code says as far as things being engineered. And if they can't get it through engineering, then they, their option is a permanent foundation. So we're working with the, the industry on getting that addressed before. And we have received three RFPs for the solid waste disposal franchise. We will be sitting down over the next two weeks with staff going over them, we will present to the board on March third for them to make a determination, the boards asked for some additional, for information regards to what each entity has proposed. So we'll be working on getting that up to you as well.
Will all three be presented?
Well, Andrew and I are working that process now, I think what we're probably going to do is come up with some type of a spreadsheet for you, so you can see what all three prepared by category, so you, you have that. Instead of going through six hundred pages of documents to try to figure it out.
And the closeout for that is, is it already passed? For the RFPs middle?
All, all RFPs are due on the first, first, thirty-first, excuse me, and Andrew and his staff have, we've selected the staff internally to go over those and we'll be coming back, I say on the third to get that through.
Thank you.
Saturday, just so you know, South Line Medical Center is doing a memorial of sorts for those who have passed from COVID from ten AM to twelve PM at the Bridge Street Park, so if you're interested, that's where it is. They posted all the social media and I informed them that I would let the, the board know what we're doing, so there's that. As you know, we have been working, the state legislature required a working group to address the challenges of the China Springs Youth Camp. Specifically, the legislature cut funding to the youth camp. It's China Springs Camp is designed by statute, every, not every county, all but Clark County pay into it. Rate that's a formula that's in the statute. And then on top of that, the state was providing a couple million dollars, I believe, and they cut that this last session. There have been some issues and concerns about how the, the operation of it goes, the governance of it. So after several meetings, working with Judge Todd Young in Douglas County and Judge Rob out of Washoe County. They have decided to, as the, as the working group that we're gonna run, similar to how we do with Wondrick. And that the executive committee, which will consist of the Douglas County District Court Judge, a Douglas County Commissioner. Chief JPO for Douglas County, I can't remember who the fourth one is, will be the executive committee, since it is a Douglas County operation, so people pay into it, it's kind of a little bit different hybrid than what we were used to with Wondrick. And then the advisory board will be made up of voting members, the, the three top paying counties, which Lion County, one of them will have two votes. Everybody else will have one vote, the advisory committee will meet at least twice a year, it can be more often. And the executive committee members are not part of that by, so it kind of cleans some of that up. Now, the next thing we gotta work on is, is how we address future funding and legislation for that operation at the next session, so that's where we're heading there from now. Somehow, I'm not sure what I did to Humboldt County. But I made them mad and I got put in, in being the chair, the co-chair of Judge Rob of the China Spring Working Group and trying to deal with the eight or nine different district court judges and fourteen different chief JPOs, it was like herding cats, but we're getting them. I'm building a better America, Grant, I'm on my desk, if you want to go see, there's about a six-inch binder worth of paper to address the guidance of this, we will be addressing or coming to the board on the seventeenth to address ARPA and this funding, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for. And more importantly, we're gonna have a separate agenda item for the board to kind of sit down and have a discussion about prioritizing projects. So right now, we have some drainage issues throughout the county, but we have a drainage plan in place for Dayton. We have the Dayton Government Center issue, we have the justice complex issue, we have road issues, we have a desire to do something in Mount House with, with a community center. And so we, we're gonna request the board to give some consideration as to how we're gonna prioritize these things so that we can start addressing how we fund them in the future and where we put our money initially to get some leases paid.
Jeff, if I can make a, a, cause I'm sure that one's gonna be a busy one, if I could make a, mostly we have like a workshop or something, you know, where that's the only issue we're dealing with. I think that'd be a good way to go, and we could do kind of like we do with NDOT, where we rank order and come to a consensus.
Correct, we can, we can do that, I will give you, Mr. Chair, we'll pick a, a date that's not important to me. Maybe the Wednesday before or the Friday after or something. So we are working with Carson Health and Human Services and Quad County Emergency Manager Group. We will have, be taking delivery of about ten thousand home test kits here in the next week or so for COVID. We're working with human services, libraries and a few other places for those to be distributed where people can come in and pick them up or they call and say, hey, you think we're symptomatic? Staff go up, put it to the sidewalk, go back in, the person come pick it up and move forward, so we're working through that process. There has been some question, Commissioner Gray had a constituent ask him about why we aren't doing more testing. The reality of it is we have limited staff, Health and Human Services viewpoint is if you're sick, stay home. And that's pretty good advice, and we don't have the staffing to, to do all the testing that we'd like to have done, we're focusing on vaccination. And then this is one that I gotta tell you, it is it's difficult, so the Wildland Urban Interface Code, the state fire marshal has adopted a rule. And under NRS four seven seven, the state fire marshal has authority for all fire prevention issues. Unless they enter to an interlocal agreement with the Fire Protection District to take care of those things. All four of our fire districts have entered into such an interlocal agreement. The state fire marshal did not adopt chapter five of the rule code, which is dealing with building structures. Central Line County Fire, so what we're seeing now is somebody comes in to build a home. So what we're seeing now is somebody comes in to build a home. They go through our building permit process and our plan review process. They are also now going through Central Line Counties' plan review process and being charged accordingly. So the price of construction is going to go up for residential, commercial, industrial buildings in the Central Line County quarter. So Mr. Haskin and I are meeting with Central Line County Fire, I believe, next week. To kind of figure out how we mainstream that, make it a simpler approach. Verify that what they're charging isn't aligned with what state statute allows for. And see if we can get this process cleaned up a little bit, so it's not as clunky as it is right now. We're having some challenges with it. But we're, we're working through it right now.
Yeah, I'm glad you're doing that. I also, I'd also encourage you guys to take a look at the fees on that as well. They shouldn't be, for a plan review, they shouldn't be getting hit twice. I mean, that is, I think it's a.
So commercial industrial get hit twice now. Fire does the, like fire life safety inspections, building does their inspections, but on residential, that's, that's my, my bigger concern is why are we? And I don't know what they're doing, right? So if, if we have a subdivision, the first home is, let's say it's eighteen hundred dollars for building permit plan. After that, it's only a hundred dollars per home. I don't know what Central Lion is doing, if it's X amount of dollars per every home or what they're doing. So we needed that conversation, figure out how we make this thing work a little bit better and move forward. Hey, any questions, comments or concerns on that?
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Mr. Page, you actually touched on something that I was gonna ask today about prioritizing capital improvements and infrastructure. And I appreciate all your department heads due to. Meet the requests of the board. Agenda items in a very timely fashion. And I think your department heads, yourself, Aaron. People working under those department heads do a wonderful job to get us information. And I thank you for that. I think we, and I know that you touched on this. We need to help out with that and also. I think. We mislead the public in a lot of ways and, and where I'm going with that is we've discussed. The water treatment plants, Dayton Government Complex, flood plains, rodeo grounds, mound house center, Dayton Pool, Dayton Bridge. And I don't know if we really ever prioritize any of that as a board or we just throw it on the agenda. We address some of those on a monthly basis and then we, we move on to the next iron in the fire. And, and I think that this, something like this would help us focus as well and prioritize. The most pressing needs in the county while not misleading. People in the county as to, oh yeah, they're, they're gonna do this. It's on the agenda and they're gonna talk about it. And yeah, we're talking about it, but I think prioritizing this will help out. Mr. Page and our department heads and also give our board a clear direction. Am I off base there, Mr. Page or?
No, I, I think what the best way to handle this is Commissioner Gray suggested is we do a workshop and get all the, everything that are pipe dreams or what we've been asked to look at in place. And figure out what the priorities are so we can start addressing them through. Pre-engineering, engineering, construction, all those kinds of things and figure out where we're going. Just because staff has a recommendation of what the priority should be, the board may not agree with that. So we need to sit down and have those conversations so we can move forward, understand that. Mr. Foley is an example, is very passionate about a couple of things, projects completed. So he's gonna push very hard for getting the Dayton Government Center constructed and getting the justice complex done. So we can use that quarter cent sales tax for other things in the county and be done with the justice complex. He's been, been doing this since two thousand nine or ten. And he wants to start utilizing that funding for something besides district court. And I'm not here to beg on district court, but let's, let's get that, let's get some of these projects taken care of.
Or we rescind that tax.
Or we send it, but we have to come up with some ways to pay for some.
Thank you, Chairman Gray.
Commissioner Keller.
Aren't they didn't want to unmute? Sorry about that. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go to me to continue on the road. I just have one further question. On slide two, you mentioned staff wants to move towards written reports because, and you know, in the interest of time. I'm here, I'll be here fourteen hours a day and I don't think these guys would mind, you know, we know what we signed up for. That's not gonna be in place of verbal presentations.
No, it's just so that if they, if they gloss over something that is minor, you have it in front of you, you have a question on it. It's not just a PowerPoint side. It's a written document that's within the agenda packet. So if the public has a question.
Okay, because I personally enjoy interacting with staff and we don't, we see them all that often and it's good to be able to do that. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question on the movie stuff. I mean, not every part of Lyon County is in the wildlife urban interface. So we do have zones, correct? Or I just opened up.
You opened a Pandora's box.
One of the conversations we're gonna have is, is just that. So how they addressed it in Washoe is. The fire, this fire protection district in the two city fire department, as I understand it, worked with Washoe County Assessor's Office. And it took a while to do this. It wasn't an inexpensive proposition, but identified areas that were, and I can't remember what IR stands for. IR one is. I can't remember which one's greater, but there's three, three IR, right? So they identified areas that were the worst, the medium and the least. So when you looked at your essential record, you knew that if you're gonna buy this parcel, that you're going to have the fireproof cigar, never be able to smoke it. Situation, or you could have a large outdoor barbecue in your backyard and not have a fall. We haven't got there yet. Those are some of the conversations we want to have. You know, for example, I would imagine the majority of Silver City is going to be ranked very high. Where if you're out on the flats and stagecoach, it's gonna be ranked very low. Right? And so within that, that code of those three designations, you know, the, the least is. Build what you build, which was the building code. The most severe is special sighting, special vent, those kind of.
Yeah, where I was going to, I just want to make sure that we have. Where we're not subjecting people who aren't really in the movie area to additional fees and additional plan reviews and additional delays and getting their, their projects completed.
That's what we're trying to, to address. All right, good job.
Well, I definitely agree that we need to have a workshop, sit down, look at all the projects and rank order. I mean, that's the only way we're gonna be able to do something about this and get things done.
Mr. Chair, if you want me to address the Lansville.
Let's, you want to back to if it's okay is take five. But do what they need to do real quick and then come back and then move on to our time certain and then hit the Lansville lap if that's all right with you.
Fire by me, sir.
Thanks. Eight A, we'll come back to that to finish with the public. Call meeting back order. We're gonna take a short detour from item eight A. We will come back to the public lands bill discussion in just a bit, but we are gonna go to our ten AM time certain for possible action. Presentation, discussion and direction to the county manager to assist the city of Fernley with negotiations. Litigation regards to the Bureau of Reclamations plans to line the TCID canal. It's a Truckee Canal Irrigation District canal with concrete. And this was requested by Commissioners Keller and Jacobson. County manager, sir, you, and then we'll go to Mrs.
Good morning, Jeff Page, time manager for record. So as was requested by the board at the last meeting. Update on what we're doing with, with city of Fernley is doing and how we could support city of Fernley in regards to TCID canal. For those of you that may not know, in two thousand eight, at about four thirty in the morning, a hole. Began to erode and flooded about four hundred plus homes. In, in the city of Fernley, which then resulted in years of litigation. As well as conversations with Bureau of Reclamation, TCID and what we're going to do to prevent this from happening again. City of Fernley has gone through an extensive period of working with BOR trying to resolve this. Unfortunately, has not gone as they had planned. So they're here today, Mr. Chair, members of the board, to present to you what, what they're doing, what's happened so far and what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Good morning, Deputy City Manager. What he just said. So I was gonna do a brief introduction of why we're here. So that's why we're here. We have Tiger, Tiger is the law firm that is representing the city of Fernley on this litigation. You know, because of the flood, I think it's important to understand that the effort that the Bureau of Reclamation started. Several years ago was really to focus on the safety of the canal. And so we participated through many years of workshops and discussions and tried to help keep the scope on safety. And different options and what this true, true impact could be to the city of Fernley as a result. And so. Much to our dismay, we went down the litigation path and are in the middle of that right now. So I will let David Brigden, who is our special attorney, go through that, but quickly I want to do a quick introduction. Patrick Marsh is here and he is our new deputy city manager. So you'll see his face around as well.
Ms. Hoover, I'm sorry, before you step away, just for the audience's edification. That don't know the impacts and what lining that con, that canal with concrete would do. I think we're pretty well familiar up here. Most of us have been involved with it for a very long time. But can you let them know exactly what those impacts would be and how devastating they would be?
Sure. And I think David's gonna go through that a little bit, but just generally speaking. So the city of Fernley right now serves all of our municipal water through groundwater resources. We are actually in the middle of doing some construction to use surface water. But as you know, a lot of the recharge that comes through the canal and the reason that firmly was established was because of that canal. Comes from there. So there potentially will be future impacts to the groundwater resources. And furthermore, there are about four hundred domestic well users in the city of Fernley. Who get their recharge from the canal as well. That will be armed through this effort. So I think David's gonna expand a little bit on that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Brigden with Tiger, Tiger. We serve as water attorneys for the city of Fernley. As well as other jurisdictions in the state. I've got a little presentation here to provide some background. I heard you say you're fairly familiar with it, but I'll go through some of it if I'm going too slow or giving you too much background, I'll speed it up. Let's give a couple of slides here. This is the overview of the Truckee and the Carson rivers. And the importance of the canal is that it divides. Canal is located, goes from Derby Dam right about here. And it comes through Fernley and then comes down to the Hotten reservoir. And so it basically connects the two river systems, Truckee River and Carson River. And it does that in order to provide sustainable water resources to the city of Fernley, to the farms in Fernley. And it does that in order to provide sustainable water resources to the city of Fernley, to the farms in Fernley, and to the farms in Fallon. As Daphne said, the project was created in 1902. It was actually one of the first two reclamation projects under the new, the 1902 Reclamation Act to ever be built. There's a difference in opinion as to whether we were number one or whether New Mexico was number one, but we think we were, but they both happened right around the same time. This was the reason why the Reclamation Act was passed. And it was passed in order to, one of the purposes of it was to encourage the development of communities in the formerly desert area by bringing water to them. Fernley, it's no coincidence that the canal was began its construction in 1902, was completed in 1905, and I think I've got a typo there, Fernley was actually founded in 1904, 1905. There's no coincidence that Fernley was founded when the canal was built, because there was no reason to have a town there until you brought water to it and did that. And so Fernley was, was one of the success stories of the Reclamation Act. It was a town that was created specifically because a reclamation project existed there. The canal was constructed, as anybody who drives by will see, is an open, unlined ditch. And that's really important to what we're gonna be talking about here. So as, as was mentioned, in 2008, the canal flood flooded, affected about 600 homes. Since then, the canal has been operated under flow restrictions, so there's only a limited amount of water you can put through the canal. It was designed for about 1,200 CFS. Under these flow restrictions, you can only have between 300 and 550 CFS. That's a problem for the farmers up in Fallon, because it means that you can't bring the most water to them that you otherwise could. So the Bureau's been studying potential fixes since 2008, and we've been involved in that process with the Bureau. Originally, it was, it was a cooperative process, and we were working, trying to work together with the Bureau in order to come up with a good fix for this. So there was a bunch of preliminary studies that were done, and we looked at a bunch of different alternatives. And then, and then the Bureau actually started a formal environmental impact statement process in 2015. And that's important, because that's the first step that a government agency, a federal agency had to do before taking any action, is to do the environmental impact statement. We were named a cooperative agency, and that's another important thing when you get to the litigation here. They recognized that Fernley had a higher interest than anybody else in what was going on here, and they named us Cooperative Agency, which means that they were supposed to be consulting with us, working cooperatively with us on preparing this DIS. They published the draft, DIS, in 2020, and the final one was published in September 2020. They issued what they know, what they call their recorded decision, which is their final decision on the project on December 15, 2020. Here's our problem with it. So during the preliminary studies, and when we were doing all the scoping for the environmental impact statement, we looked at all kinds of solutions to fix this problem. The problem was the canal where it goes through Fernley, it's above, the water level is above the level of the town. So there's basically the walls of the canal are like dykes holding back the water, and those walls have failed, and that's why we had a flood. The walls have failed, by the way, because Bureau had failed to do proper maintenance over the hundred years that that canal was there. But regardless of that, what could we do to fix it? Well, there were several alternatives. One was put a concrete line, just concrete the whole inside of the canal. The other one was just rebuild the walls where they're, where they, where they have weaknesses in the wall, rebuild those walls. We could rebuild them and install sheet walls, there's steel or vinyl into them to make them stronger. We could also inject concrete, basically creating a dam along the wall. Or we could just leave the flow restrictions in place and just assume that the canal's gonna operate at a lower level. The problem we had, we discussed all of these options during the process that we were working cooperatively with the Bureau. And, and we begged the Bureau, over and over again, we requested that the Bureau. Analyze all of these options and use, we have a groundwater model that's created by the Desert Research Institute that models effects on groundwater in the area. And we said, this is a, this is a scientific tool that the Bureau helped pay for, let's use that to analyze these alternatives and see what impacts on groundwater the various alternatives would have. The Bureau refused to do that, all the way up until they kept telling us, oh, it's coming later, it's coming later, we'll use that at the appropriate time, and then boom, they published the draft DIS. They ignore every alternative on here except for concrete lining the canal and refuse to use the groundwater model to study what the impacts of that would be. So needless to say, we were a little taken aback by that. And, but we tried even after the draft DIS was, was put out, we met with our congressional representatives, we met with higher ups at the Bureau, down to Sacramento, and even had contact with some of the people in the DC office of the Bureau. Trying to get them to listen to our issues and, and listen to our concerns. And we hit a brick wall every time. And then they published the final DIS, selected one of the alternatives that they had, they said, oh, we have five alternatives, so they're all different alternatives lining the canal. None of them included anything other than lining the canal, which is not really the type of alternatives that you're supposed to be looking at. So, and, and the other thing that DIS did is, they're supposed to, under federal regulations, yeah, when the, when the agency does an environmental impact statement and they find that there's going to be impacts. They're required to look at how ways that they can help mitigate those impacts. They did none of that in the process. So all these federal regulations that they have, they impose on everybody else, they refuse to follow themselves. So what's the fundamental problem? You were alluding to this a minute ago, Mr. Chairman. The fundamental problem is a loss of recharge to the basin. So Fernley's historically relied on groundwater served its residents. The natural perennial yield of the Fernley basin is just 600 acre feet a year. That's from the natural rain falling, not a lot. But because the canal was there, which is why the city of Fernley was built there, canal as an unlined canal, recharges the groundwater aquifer to the tune of 12,000 to 18,000 acre feet a year. So that's where the majority of the water that supports the groundwater aquifer comes from. Fernley holds approximately 9,000 acre feet of permits for the, for our municipal system. The total commitments in the basin that the state engineer has issued is about 12,000 acre feet. Now, now, this is not one of those cases where the state engineer just overappropriated the basin at all. In fact, the state engineer worked with the federal government, the United States Geological Survey, did the initial groundwater budgets for Fernley back in the 1970s. And said, you can rely on this recharge from the canal when you issue permits, state engineer. And so that's what the state engineer did, he relied on the fact that this canal was recharging the aquifer, and he issued all these permits on the basis of using that water. So the loss of the recharge lining the canal and stopping that recharge that goes into the aquifer is going to immediately turn this into one of the most over appropriated and overpumped basins in the state. And that's a huge problem, it's gonna result in lowering groundwater levels, it's all kinds of other effects that come with that too, like land subsidence and various things. So we were left with no choice, we had to file litigation against the Bureau, and so that's what we did. And there's two primary issues that were arguing in litigation. Number one was the Bureau's recorded decision that DIS process supported by substantial evidence. As, as I noted here, I note the federal regulations that the Bureau is supposed to follow, environmental impact statement must consider reasonable alternatives, they didn't do that in this case. They must take a hard look at the environmental consequences of the project, they didn't do that in this case. They must consider and analyze mitigation measures to resolve those impacts, they didn't do that in this case. They didn't follow their own regulations and laws that if any one of us was going to ask for a permit from the Bureau, they would have required us to do it. So the question is, there's a second question though in here, and that is, does Fernley have a right to continue recharge from that canal? And that's one of the more contentious points here, because what the federal government's position is, is you have no right to continue recharge from that canal. And because you have no right to it, we don't have to do any mitigation, we don't have to even consider your, your, the impacts to you, because you don't have any right to this water to be in.
Has there been any litigation on that point specifically, I mean, because that almost amounts to a taking. I mean, if it's, if there is a right, then that's a taking without.
Right, and, and so, but that's what the litigation is about, we have to prove that we have a right.
Okay, that's.
So. So we brought a complaint for what we call declaratory relief. Under, under the, and, and this is a bunch of legal stuff, I'll just skip over, but basically what we alleged is that the Bureau by deciding, so. So under the Reclamation Act of 1902, the federal government didn't take over the water law in individual western states. That was a big concern the western states had back then, they said, we, we, we don't, we want the federal government to come in and help us build these projects and fund these projects, but we don't want them deciding our water law. We want to keep that at the state level. And so the Reclamation Act included the section, the section eight, that specifically said, when the federal government does things in a state, they have to abide by state law for water. This is, they, not federal law, and so it's not a federal takeover. But in this case, they didn't do that, they, they made a determination themselves, because they have no authority or jurisdiction to make, that, that Fernley have no right to this water. They didn't go ask the state engineer if Fernley has the right for the water, they didn't go to the state courts in Nevada and ask if Fernley has the right for that water. They said, we've determined, they didn't even go to federal courts, they said, we've determined as the Bureau that you have no right to that water, and they made that decision. And so what we've alleged is that's outside the scope of the authority and jurisdiction, and they had no right to make that, that, that determination. So this is just some of the legal theories that we have advanced in the court as to why we do have a right to that continued recharge. Essentially, they all boil down to one thing. The federal government came in in 1902 and said, we are going to bring this water into your basin to encourage people to come and settle here and to rely on that water. And they've done so for a hundred years, and people have relied on those representations, and we've relied on the, the federal government's determination that that water can be used as part of the water budget. And now, all of a sudden, they're just yanking, after a hundred years of this, they're yanking the rug out from under us. And, and that, that's the basis of, of our right to that continued recharge, you can't do that once people have that reliance on that resource. So what's the status of the litigation? Well, unfortunately, we've had some issues. So we filed our complaint last year in the court. The Pyramid Lake Paiute tribe was granted, was granted status to intervene on behalf of reclamation, because they would be the beneficiary of less water via the River Dam. So they intervened against us, some local water users, specifically domestic well users, they intervened on, on our side. And so the Bureau, rather than answer our complaint, filed a motion to dismiss. And the basis of their motion to dismiss was that we have no right to even be in court against them. And they based that on the fact that they asserted that we're only asserting economic interests and not environmental interests and environmental policy act that the DIS has been done under. Only grant standing to people who have environmental concerns. We briefed that issue, we went to the federal district court judge in Reno on December 13th, and we argued that issue with her, and. And immediately thereafter, she issued an order dismissing us, saying, no, you're only an economic actor, you're no different than a private corporation that's just looking out for the, for the money of its shareholders. And, and so dismissed our complaint. And what surprised everybody, I mean, we were really a shock, was she dismissed the complaint with prejudice and with no leave to amend our complaint. So it's, it's about the worst outcome you can possibly get in, in district court. The, the judge relied heavily on a case, a federal case, that involved a private corporation that was worried about effects to its spring that it relied on. And the, the court said, no, you're a private corporation, so therefore you can't assert environmental interests. The judge completely ignored precedent from Nevada, Nevada federal courts, Churchill County and Fallon at one time sued the Bureau over a DIS issue. And the Bureau tried to dismiss that complaint as well, and it went to the Ninth Circuit, and the Ninth Circuit said, no, these, these are government entities, they have a right, they have an obligation to protect the water supply of their citizens, and that's an environmental resource. And therefore, but the judge ignored that, she took it, she, she compared us to the private organization.
So that's still leaving opening for you guys to appeal to the Ninth Circuit?
So, so that's the next step. So, so where we are now is we've asked the judge respectfully to amend her order to at least give us, to at least make it without prejudice and give us leave to amend the complaint. And we drafted an amended complaint to try to make the wording what she was looking for. For instance, in parts of the complaint, the original complaint, Bob, who said, this will have an effect on groundwater resources in, in, in the Fernley area. He thought that covered natural resources as well. The judge interpreted that as those are economic resources. So, so we were asking to amend it to say we're looking after the groundwater aquifer, not resources, but those, those are the kinds of things we have in our draft amendment to try to, to try to. Get at what the judge's concerns were. So we filed that motion to amend, the Bureau, the reclamation has until next week to file an opposition to that, and then we'll file a reply brief. On January 19th, the Fernley City Council voted to authorize us, if the, if the motion to amend is not successful, they authorize us to appeal to the Ninth Circuit. And so, and we believe we have strong Ninth Circuit precedent from that Churchill County case.
So does the proposed amendment go right back to the judge that issued the order?
Yes, yeah, you have to, you have to go back to the, that, we're gonna be in front of that judge no matter what, even if the Ninth Circuit overturnes, turns, sends it back for discretion on the merits of being in front of her. So that's pretty much where we stand at this point, and I'll just answer your questions that you might have. I know that there's, there's one thing, based on reading the agenda item. You might be wondering, you know, what, what kind of support can the county commission or the county give to the city of Fernley? And we've been doing a lot of thinking on that. The, the, one thing that, that you could do is, is we could work with the county manager, and perhaps even just a letter that would be signed by the chairperson. That would support our position that Fernley is more than just an economic, just a, like, an economic act, like a private corporation. That cities and counties have different standing in Nevada, and we do have standing to, to assert a jurisdiction to, to look after the environment within our jurisdictions. That would be extremely helpful.
Okay, so, because I'm, I'm just gonna ask one last question, turn it over. So bottom line at front, you already mentioned just the letter, what other asks have you got? I mean, do you guys have all the funding you need for it, and this is more to Daphne, I think, you guys have all the resources you need financially to move forward? I mean, because Fernley is a very, very important part of this county, and we have a responsibility to you guys. So just let us know what you need, I mean, throw out your wish list and then just leave it open for us to discuss at that point.
I was happy for financial support.
Was it, do you want it, is, is there a need for it? I mean, is there a need, is that a request? There's a difference between need and want, I mean, we learned that as little kids from our parents.
Absolutely, I, I getcha, and I think. You know, right now, we're, we're doing okay, we, we have resources to support where we are now. If this moves forward, you know, we might, we might reach out, but we're doing okay. I know one of the bigger questions that people have been asking is, is Fernley clearly, if you haven't been up there, it's booming, right? It's growing, and, and so there's always a question about what does this mean for the growth and development of Fernley overall? And right now, we're doing okay, we have done a water resource plan, so if you haven't read it, I mean, it's on our website, are happy to send it to you. But it really kind of outlines what those water resources are, and that we're, at least in the near to immediate term, we're okay, but it's something that we're monitoring for the long run. We also know that if they move forward with this project, we understand that it will be in phases. So we just don't know, and so we're trying to manage our growth and development conservatively so that we can address the, the one.
Awesome.
There's one other thing I might mention as well, when we do get to the Ninth Circuit, if we, if the judge doesn't amend the order, we're not going to the Ninth Circuit. One, one, one thing, we may be coming back and asking not just by county, but Naco and NLC, is to, is to possibly file a, this brings with the Ninth Circuit. Is to, is to possibly file a, this brief with the Ninth Circuit. On the issue of whether cities and counties uh, in Nevada uh, should have standing to challenge uh, um. Environmental impact statements on the basis of harm to the environment. So uh, I think that's an important issue that would have statewide importance to every city and county in the state.
All right. Thank you. Um, at this time, I'm going to open it up to the board for comments and I see Commissioner Keller has got her hand up. So I'm going to go straight to her. If that's okay.
Well, I kind of have one of them dumb questions because you've already went through this process, went to the judge. Now you're looking at the Ninth Circuit. But the comment was made um. Like they were treating you like a corporation and not a government entity, um, you know, as a city of Fernley. So I guess where my question is going is. Other than just a letter of support, i- is this something to where maybe Lyon County needed to join forces with the city of Fernley? Um, as county government, um, you know, the city is part of our county uh, moving forward in ma- making your argument. That question made sense anyways. Um.
You're right, right. Right now, at, at the stage where uh, I don't know that there's an opportunity for the county to jump in at the moment. Um, and, and be like an intervener. But as I.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
There. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, at the, at the stage that the proceedings are at right now, I don't know that there's. Uh, a, a super good opportunity for the county to like jump in as a, as a, as what we call an intervener in support of our position. Uh, but like I said, as, as when the case, i- if we get to the Ninth Circuit on this appeal, the judge doesn't amend her order. Uh, that would be the opportunity to, for the county potentially uh, file an amicus brief in support of our position uh, in front of the Ninth Circuit. So.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, I know we're kind of like after the fact here, but you know, in light of, you know, what her decision was. Uh, I'm just trying to see where our avenue is to, to get the most support behind you.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibson.
Thank you Chairman Gray. I appreciate your time here today. Ms. Hooper as well. Oh, there she is. Hi. And I wholeheartedly support us writing a letter um, and um, including uh, some advice from, from your outlaw office and drafting that. I attended a water meeting in Fallon and I chatted with the representative from BOR and. And they're clear that this is the best, safest method, but the, the price tag on this lining of the canal is absolutely unbelievable. Okay, I told the gentleman from BOR, I'm like, I've never seen a canal or anything else breach uphill. I don't understand why you feel the need to line a canal on both sides if it, if it is truly just a safety measure. It feels like it's a personal attack. Uh, and I don't, I don't know why um, that would be the case. Um, but if you wouldn't, do you have an idea that I, the price tag on that canal? And what the taxpayers will be coming up with as opposed to um, I mentioned just trenching down uh, the downhill side. Filling that with concrete or some other um. Hard substance that would, that would make it impermeable. Um, but uh. Um, and then to blame the muskrat or the gopher, I, I think is still um. Very misleading. The canal was running at full speed, getting water down to TCID. We had a unique rain event where we had flash flooding. Um, that is why the canal breached. It wasn't because a muskrat dug down fourteen feet and burrowed in there and then uh, committed hairy carry. So. Um, I think that this whole, whole thing is beyond belief. Um, but again, the price tag, um, just for the taxpayers to hear and.
Yeah, so that, that's actually one of the things that's, that's kind of a, sticks in our jaw on this thing is that. The total price tag that the Bureau has estimated for the whole project and they intend to build it in phases, but the whole project, they're talking about a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And, and the, the thing is, is the Bureau is not going to, the Bureau will affront the money for that. But then they turn around and they charge the water users, including the city of Fernley, to reimburse that over a period of thirty, forty years.
So they want to pay you guys to hang yourselves.
Exactly. They want us to pay to hurt ourselves. And uh, and, 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 and to your point on the, of the fixing it for the flooding and keeping the safety concerns, you know. We've, we've likened this whole project to uh, you walk into your doctor and you have a broken arm. And you say, hey doc, can you help me fix this broken arm? But the, you know, the breach parts of the canal. And the doctor says, oh, sure, sure. We'll help you. We'll, we'll fix your broken arm. But first we're going to amputate your leg to do it. And uh, and, and that's exactly what they're doing to us here. Um, so yeah, it's a, it's a huge expense. It'll be a huge expense to all the people in. Up in, in the project, including the people out in Fallon, uh, who have to help reimburse that cost.
Got anything else?
Um, in the litigation, it seemed like there was some, and this may. May impact others, may not, but as far as what they said about well users, um. And was it, ma- can you, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth or say something that isn't true, but. As far as uh, the well users in, in Fernley were basically stealing the water. Is that?
That, I, I don't know that I would characterize what they said as they were stealing the water, but they're saying that they had. That, that they had no continued right to it. Um, so they built their wells and, and, and use that water to build their wells. Uh, and the water goes away. Too bad for them. That would basically be bad. Um, and so um, and, and we ran a, we did, we did use the model, the groundwater model. To run a simulation and to find out, you know, if they do line this canal. How much, how many of those wells would be at risk? Yeah, of those four hundred domestic wells, the simulation popped out and said it's over a forty-year period. Bottom levels are declining over forty years. Um, seventy-five percent of them would go dry. Um, and, and, and these are, and keep in mind, and the Bureau's answer to that was we just took them up to city water. That was the Bureau's answer. Well, a lot of these are located in areas where there is no city water available. We would have to extend millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure to try to get city water out there. And it doesn't make sense. When you're dealing with like five acre lots to run city water lines to five acre lots. It's just from an infrastructure standpoint, that makes little sense. So. Uh, so, but that was the Bureau's answer. Just took them up to city water.
I know there's a lot of well users throughout the county or a lot of, yeah, people on wells throughout the county that rely on Carson Basin or. That water flowing out of the Walker River Basin. Um, and I just would hate to see this. The government start attacking private well owners for sure. So. Thank you Chairman. And I, again, I appreciate your time and I think a, a letter would be very um. The, very much the least we could do. So again, your time here today is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Hawkeye.
No, I'd just like to thank you. Very informative. Um, certainly has our eyes opened as to what can happen to us in the rural areas. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of comments. We fully support you guys. This, this is just. Overreached by the BOR. You know, it's, it, it's funny how government agencies are, and of course, will grant standing to certain people, certain times. But not other times. Like, I, I can't understand how a government entity doesn't have standing, but. Somebody living in the state back east can have standing to sue the BLM over wild horses that they haven't even seen. But that's, that's another story. Uh, I'm certainly supportive of us writing a letter. Um, I don't know if an amicus brief would be. Appropriate at this time for your, on, on rehearing the motion. You know, on, on changing it from with prejudice to without, but I'm certainly willing or. Supportive of us doing whatever we can to support the city of Fernley in this because. It has a, a bigger impact, not only to the city of Fernley, but it's all local governments in the state of Nevada. So this, this is something that, that we need to stand with you on. And I agree that this should, this should go to Naco and it should go to the League of Cities and you should be getting support from all the other organizations.
The entire state.
Yeah, because this is an affront on local governments.
And, and just on your point on the standing issue, that was particularly jarring for us. In the judge's order. She actually said, well, it'd be different if you were a, a private nonprofit environmental organization like the Sierra Club, then you would have standing.
A government, government's nonprofit. Hate to tell her.
Yeah, but, but, but since you're, since you're a government entity who, who was required by law to protect the environment in your jurisdiction, you don't have standing. That, that was difficult.
Commissioner Gibson.
I just want to reiterate, a hundred and thirty-five million, right? Just think what that money could be used for. Outside. Um, one of the things he said too is, well, they don't have to maintain the canal anymore if they do this. I'm like, do you know how much maintenance you can do for a hundred and thirty-five million? I know. It, so at any rate, again, I appreciate your time, man. What we could do with a hundred and thirty-five million would be prioritizing our list pretty easy. So again, thank you.
So, uh, I've not done quite yet, guys. Um, my comments on this, you know, Commissioner Jacobson, I'm sorry, but I think you're wrong. There is a wrath that's responsible for this federal government and their egregious overreach and their lack of uh. Ability to maintain a canal that, you know, led to this and uh, you know, typical government, you know, knee, knee jerk reaction and uh, be damned the consequences. Um, there's an entire community that, that relies on this. So there's a hundred years of precedence, more than a hundred, a hundred fifteen years of precedence. And uh, I have been involved quite a bit with water since coming to this state. And I got to tell you, I think this is. If not the most important, the second most important issue that I've, that I've worked on and uh, we got to put a stop to it. I mean, this is, this is no, nothing short in my mind of a taking. Um, and if somebody really doesn't have a, uh, you know, have a stake in it, it's the federal government. Um, they're removed. Yeah, they're responsible for the canal, but that's all they should be responsible for. And that responsibility includes maintaining what they've uh, what they put in place to, you know, to uh, provide for the users down line that it's been providing for. So. I got to say, anything we can do, I think I'll be behind. And I know most of these guys will be behind. I'm sure about all of them. So at this point, I am looking for a mode, I'm sorry, I've got a, uh, I've got a hand by Commissioner Keller.
Wondering if you were going to notice that. Anyways, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I'd like to move to direct the county manager to assist the city of Fernley with negotiations and litigation in regards to the Bureau of Reclamation's plans to line the TCID. Canal with concrete. That recommendation would be a minimum of a very strong letter of support. And up to and include uh, as they're moving forward, um, as Mr. Rigdon had pointed out, uh, and possibly uh, I'm at amicus brief. Um, down the road, I think we're going to start with the letter, but I don't want to limit it to the letter. Uh, so I'd like the county manager to, to have some leeway here to move this forward. And of course, if we get to a point to where we, we need to help with funding or other needs, and of course, that would have to come back to the board.
Hey, we have a first, I think I'm going to uh, look to Mr. Jacobson for the second.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, the motion recently restated was to direct county manager to prepare a letter of support with the city of Fernley. And to also uh, be ready to provide an amicus brief on behalf of uh, firmly if it's needed. Does that simply say to Commissioner Keller?
That was pretty simple. Yeah.
Thanks. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. We'll open it up the board for discussion. If there's any discussion amongst the board. Okay, we are good here. I'm going to open it up for public comment at this point. Any public comment? Nothing on Zoom, nothing here. Okay, so um, go ahead and we'll take the action. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? And it passes five zero. And I thank you guys for the work you're doing on that and uh, keep up the good work. We're here to help. Okay, um, at this time, we are going to double back on ourselves. Now that we've got the time certain out of the way, we're going to go to the county manager for an update on the Landville.
Good morning, um, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jeff Page, County Manager, for the record. Um, for the members in the audience, we keep saying that all the time so that we're doing the ministry of this talk. So there's been um, a lot of misinformation about the Landville that's been put out on social media as well as emails and uh, all kinds of things. There is no Landville. Did we have no Landville at this point in time? Nothing's in black and white. The Board of Commissioners directed staff to uh, look at, investigate and determine if Landville made sense to address some issues that we have in the county. Addressing not only county issues, but um, economic development throughout, throughout the count. So at this point in time, we've had one stakeholders meeting where a group of people, um, a variety of uh, local government agencies. Um, a number of private property owners um, came forward and had a discussion. Walk about what they would like to see in a land, but one of those being high bay minerals out of uh. Um, first in regards to their operation at the Ann Basin Project. Um, Desert Hills Dairy and because their operations surround like five hundred acres of field and land, they would like to have that to deal their, their dairy issues. Um, Nevada Builders Alliance based upon um, concerns of the development and specifically dealing with issues in mound house and having lack of sewer. In mound house for industrial growth and having to rely upon commercial septic. Because there's someplace we could find someplace to, to put a, a sewer system. Um, a sewer treatment facility, those kinds of things. We are working right now to um, do some initial outreach and follow up with the Paiute Tribe. The Walker River Paiute Tribe. Um, and if people ask why Walker River Paiute Tribe, um, for the board and the community's um, information. The Walker River Paiute Tribe is no longer just in Mineral County. Um, they have been given a significant amount of land in what used to be the Julian Ranch, AKA the Stanley Ranch. There's your wonderful Buska Hill, Julian Lane. Keep driving. When you think you're getting close, close to hell, stop and you're there. Um, and it, it, that land circles completely around to reservation land owned by walkers of Paiute Tribe in Mineral County. So they're part of that process as well. Um, so you got to Peak Services, we're reaching out to as well as State of Nevada. Addressing specifically um, state lands and state parks issues on the, the east. On the Walker, Walker River State Recreation Area. I can never remember the name. Why can't they just call it the Walker State Park? Um, there, there's checkerboard of state lands and BLM. So trying to get. One side of the road to be state, the other side of the road to be BLM. And then we don't have to mess with this anymore and get that figured out. Um, and then some, some lands up in, in the firmly area um, that are in the, in the county. Um, but uh. City of Fernley completely encompasses it. Not to be confused with the city of Fernley's Landville. We're on the other side of life. So the process so far has been, uh, we've received some preliminary information. We, the Board of Commissioners approved the scope of work in a contract with Resource Concepts out of Carson City. They've done a, a, a number of jobs for the county over the years. Um, their GIS folks are now taking that information and putting together a map. That map is not the final document. That map is purely for us to go out and get public input. It's what they like, what they don't like. Come back to the board, the planning commission as a, as a public lands manager, the advisory board. What are your concerns? What are those issues? Right now, this is an information gathering operation. That's all this is. There, the board has not approved anything. In regards to what goes on the map, what doesn't go on that map. The board hasn't even approved language to go forward for a land.
We haven't even seen the suggested parcels yet.
Correct. And I can't tell you all the suggested parcels because yes, I was part of the stakeholders meeting, but I have no idea what. Township range section that they're talking about, what APN number they're talking about. All that information was correlated to community development. To RCI to put together a map by community. Once we have that information, we will be then be going out into the communities. In Dayton, Mound House, Silver Spring, Stagecoach, Mason Valley, Smith Valley. To have community meetings to discuss what's being proposed, what they like, what they don't like. At that, once we're done with that process, then we'll come back to the Board of Commissioners, through the planning mission and have those same conversations. And then we'll determine whether or not we want to pursue any of it, all of it, or whatever the board wants to change. The county specifically, we have a number of concerns in regards to getting pub, some of the public lands in the county hands for. A variety of purposes. One, we have a number of parcels in Lyon County that we have county buildings or county facilities or county operations on. The Dayton Valley Events at the Lyon County Library and Dayton, Senior Center in Dayton. Specifically addressing what we can do to improve the industrial commercial complex in mound house and providing um, sewer and those kinds of issues. We have towers throughout the county. We have communications. We have towers throughout the county, we have communications sites on. We would like to have those, those parcels in our name so that we can deal with them and address them and not have to deal with BLM, US Forest Service, um, every so often with our, with our sites. So that, that's, that's our portion of the question. We have a chunk of property in Fernley we're looking at that someday, as Story County's landfill gets full, we have the opportunity to create another regional landfill away from population out the middle of nowhere that can be addressed. The, the board's thinking twenty, thirty years ahead of time, um, on how we deal with these issues that they're coming down the path. The private sector, I'm sure they have some, some significant ideas, what they want to see, and we'll work with those folks to determine whether it's in the best interest of the county or not. The last thing it I'll bring up is there's, there's rumor and innuendo about a parcel of property that borders a Carson River, that's somebody's private property. We are not trying to pass a lands bill so somebody can have two hundred and forty acres. I'm trying to pass a landfill that makes sense for that property for the county to maintain it, to work through our, the conservation district perspective of it, provide open space for the public to access that we can control, so we don't have a bunch of, um, dirt bikes, ATVs running over pedestrians on a hiking trail, which is occurring now, um, to clean that up and be able for us to have self-control regulation over some of those parcels along the Carson River. So we have a nice place for people who live in the Dayton area to go and play on the parcel. They can still do it now, but there's, you got one BLM, maybe two BLM law enforcement officers for what, twenty-five thousand square miles? That's the challenge.
So what I'd like to add to that comment specifically, because this has been a pain in my neck, as well as I'm sure the other commissioners. Yeah, it's not to give a private entity property, it's to allow them unfettered access. When I say unfettered, I mean from the federal government shutting down access to their property to where they can't get to their private property and allow the county to access that, and it's not for development or housing, it's not development for industrial. It's, as the county manager said, you know, the, what's been discussed is, you know, open, open space, recreational space. So, because I just want to make that very clear, because that has been a huge, uh, outcry from the community. And I, I gotta tell you, I've been out there, Commissioner Henderson's been out there, because that's in his district. Um, it's a beautiful area and I don't want to see it developed and I don't think he does either. So, you know, I think that is actually a positive thing for this lands bill.
The, the last thing I, I forgot.
Potential lands bill.
Um, is the other portion of this is dealing specifically in Dayton, portions of Mason Valley, portions of Silver Springs and portions of Smith Valley. Is getting federal land, so we have, we know where the water comes when we have flood issues and it's coming through federal land. So we want to be able to have that land in our name, so as funding becomes available, we can start dealing with drainage issues and better corral and reduce, I will never say eliminate, reduce the effects of flooding. We experience twenty-five, fifty year, one hundred year flood events on a regular basis. I hope to God I never see a five hundred year flood event. But we want to be able to have, have that those lands, so we don't have to spend eight to fourteen years going through the process with BLM or the Forest Service to get those lands in our name. That's why we're part of the landfill process to speed that up. We're doing this, to be quite honest with you, based upon conversations we had with BLM a couple of years ago. You would be much quicker getting a landfill in place that you can see some state in care of than going through our process to purchase one.
And then a, a final comment, because I know there's been a little, uh, there's been some questions. So anybody that has input on this, whether they want to see a piece of land added to the lands bill, or, you know, maybe consider not being a part of it, they should contact your office, us, who do you want them to contact?
They need to contact Andrew Haskin.
Andrew Haskin.
A Haskin at lion-county.org.
A Haskins at Lion County, pardon, lion hyphen county.org. You ready for that flood, Andrew?
So one of the things that we're, we, we will do, um, and it's, I haven't discussed it with staff, so, um, they'll make it work. But once we have some preliminary information, that's where we're going, we'll, on the planning webpage, we will create a page that deals specifically with the landfill. So people can get access to information, um, that's current and up to date. So we will be working on that process, um, once, once we have the information. I, I have, I, I asked RCI, can you send me a map? They said, no, I said, why not? I said, we're not done with it, and we don't want to get preliminary information out when we don't have all, all the information. We'd rather wait till we have all the, the, the folks from the, the two tribes, Sagatay Peak Services and the state to see before we put together the final map to start making a public, because I don't want to get into something and have somebody come in and say, okay, well, we want this now. Um, so we're, we're trying to get that out. Once we have all that information, then we'll be working with, with staff and RCI to get out in the public, have those conversations, listen to what their concerns are, listen to their complaints, and move forward from there. On the issue of Hud Bay. Lion County has not received a development application, a written request, anything in regards to what they want to do on their property. Once we have that information, once they file a development application, whether it be for a conditional use permit, a zone change, whatever it may be, then it becomes a public information thing. And if, if it's on the Smith Valley side, you know, go to the Smith Valley Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, the County Commission, it's like any other development application goes. But right now, there is nothing, other than they've had a conversation, we own this property, we're thinking about doing X, Y, and Z. I get that every day, Andrew can testify to it, from any business, we're gonna buy this property enterprise lane in, in Dayton, and we're gonna build this hundred million dollar giga factory to produce whistles.
And it never comes to fruition.
When I see a development application, I get excited. Conversations, no, I know how many roundtables we have on a regular basis, that somebody's gonna do something and we never see a development application. So I don't get too excited about it. Nevada Cocker's a perfect example, they came here in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, said we're gonna do this. It wasn't until two thirteen, two thousand and thirteen that they actually filed the application with the county to do anything. They were the one, one of the few that came to fruition. So I don't get too excited about things until I see the paper coming across our desk and it's going before the public process. Everything we do in county government, regardless of what misinformation's out there, is done in an open, public meeting. That's the process we have in place, that is required by law. We, we don't have a choice, the county does not have a choice under, we're not, we're not other states that have, uh, home rule. We have to do what the state legislature tells us to do. And so all these processes are outlined in RS two seventy-eight and other sections of the Rata Braya Statutes, so the public has access to, to make a comment. I'll leave it with one last thing. Former county commissioner Greg Honeywell, when he was the chairman of the Smith Valley Advisory Board, pushed hard to get the Ludwig operation, not to get a conditional use, especially use permit in those days, for their Jip mine operation. And went through a public process, I, before I was even involved, I had no idea what the county commission even was, I was just a lowly deputy in sheriff's office doing my job. And so the process has worked all these years and will continue to work for the public to be able to have their say and voice their concerns.
Any comments, we'll start at this.
No, I do appreciate the, uh, update on everything and I hope that it does put some people's minds at rest, that, uh, we will be taking care of things as they come to our attention. And we'd like to make sure that the public knows we are on it, okay?
But I, I was trying to suggest, if you get phone calls from constituents, please contact us. Contact us before the misinformation gets out. If we screwed something up, I mean, we have proven the last twelve years, we've been on national media a few times for wanting to screw something up. We are more willing to admit our mistakes and move on, but if you're hearing something or you have questions, call us, we'll give you the information that we know of at the time. We'll provide that, get that up to the theater. So if, if your constituents are calling, have them reach out to Andrew and myself so we can answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Page, thank you very much for that update. I, I think the, the important takeaways are, there's not a land bill yet, we're in the information gathering stage. And I think that's a, something that we see not only on this agenda item, but other agenda items, you know? Just because something is on the agenda doesn't mean it's gonna be acted on that day, is we have a long process that we have to go through. And information gathering is the first step in that. So I think we, now we make it clear, that's where we are in, in this stage. We are in the information gathering stage, and once we get information and get ideas, then it will go back out to the public. There'll be numerous opportunities for public input before we even approach Congress about a landfill, so thanks for that.
Commissioner Keller.
The only comment I have is that, you know, the misinformation is at least entertaining out there. But, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Page that if you hear a rumor, uh, if you just want to know, you know, call the county, call Jeff, call Andrew, um, and ask, you know, uh, don't, don't assume that things have been passed or things are going to happen, um, based on rumors, especially on Facebook. Oh, my God, that's the worst, but, uh, like I said, at the very least, they can be entertaining.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All due respect, ma'am, your definition of entertaining is sick.
We've known that for a long time. Uh, Commissioner James.
Thank you, Chairman Gray, um, appreciate your, uh, time and clarification on that, Jeff. And, and, uh, just on a side note, I mean, we're all for change until it, that change affects us. So, um, I empathize with people that are feeling that stress or hearing these things and, uh, you know, good for them for coming out and get, getting clarification as well. So appreciate your expertise on that, Jeff, and, and I know you'll keep everyone in the loop.
Yeah, answer all my questions, thank you, sir. All right, at this time, uh, does anybody want a quick break? Or we push on, anybody? Mr. Keller, okay, we'll take five. Yes, no, no, thanks, I'm, I, I gotta quit doing sugar, I fell off the wagon for a while. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. Okay, uh, we are gonna move on to elected official reports and, uh, District Attorney Ride, you have anything, sir?
I don't.
Okay, uh, any other elected officials in here, I'm not seeing, everyone's, anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on to appointed officials' reports. Andrew, I know you got something, where'd Andrew go?
You go.
You scared me. Shayla, have you got anything, Miss Holmes, no? Any other appointed officials I'm missing? Anybody online?
See no hands, sir.
Wow, all right, advisory board reports. We have anybody online with an advisory board report? I saw Linda Cash on there earlier.
Oh, sir. Okay, sorry.
Consent agenda. Okay, action will be taken on all items, all matters listed in the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Commissioner Gray, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second.
That's items twelve A through fourteen C.
I'm sorry, yes, uh, for possible action, approve county commissioners, item twelve A through item fourteen C. All right, motion and second, still stand?
Correct.
Okay, any discussion amongst the board? Anything in public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, guys have it. Uh, back to the regular agenda, board appointments for possible action. Back to the regular agenda, board appointments for possible action appointment. Member of the Smith Valley Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty three. We have two applications, Roger Rodart and Michael Palmer.
Mister Chair. I would like to make a motion to appoint Roger Rodart to the Smith Valley Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Roger Rodart. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any public comment on that? Sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Mister Rodart, congratulations, and thank you for stepping up. Okay, county manager, item sixteen A, possible action approval resolution adopting policies for naming county facilities, parks, cemeteries, open space and drainages.
Good morning, Mister Chair, Jeff Page, county manager, record. This is requested by Commissioner Jacobson before you as a resolution. I have verified with Mister Commissioner Jacobson that it's at his concerns. So without him here to answer any questions or address any concerns you may have.
Any comments, concerns or motions?
Mister Anderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, Mister Page. I think this is a great idea, naming a facility, you know, is a, is a long lasting thing and can be divisive. I, I had asked the district attorney if it would be possible for us to include in this resolution. A requirement for a super majority to, to approve naming of a facility. Mister I responded at this point, he's, he's not sure that we can do that. But he offered that he would look into it further if the board decided to do that. One of my thoughts on that is we could, I think, we could include in a resolution. That Board of County Commission finds that the naming of the county facilities is a matter of local concern, and that may give us a little more leeway. To, to impose a super majority requirement. So if, I, I would just like to explore that a little further if the rest of the board is, is interested in that. But regardless, I do think we need a policy in, in place before we, we name any more county facilities.
So I have a question probably for DA or maybe Jeff Page. Is there anything that requires a super majority at the county board level?
Steve Wright, DA, there is not anything that requires a super majority for an item like this at the county commission.
Thank you. Any further discussion or motion?
Chairman Gray, I appreciate the staff putting this together. I, I really believe that. If you're naming a facility, a street, something of that fashion. You might get just a little bit of controversy, but for the most part, it's gonna be, you know what? This was a slain police officer, this, and absolutely, it is a no brainer. That this facility or this should be named and. I don't know that it should be controversial. I think it should be a celebration. And a recognition of years of service of giving one's life of. Maybe monetary donation, buildings are named or. Plazas are named after businesses that donate huge amounts of money. I get that. And we always, but I just feel that something needs to be in place so that we're not naming a senior center after someone. That the people that use that facility don't even know who that person is, for example, so. That is, was some of the impetus of why I brought this up and I've. I don't, I want, I, I really want these types of things to be true celebrations of someone deserving in Lyon County. And so, for what it's worth. They, and I do appreciate again the staff that put their time into that, into this as well.
And I, you know, I've got a rebuttal comment, you know, you're using the senior centers as an example, and I actually support this as well. But, you know, I gotta say to that one individual. There, we did hear from three people that didn't know who he was, but I'll tell you the vast majority of that community knew who that individual was, and he had many, many years of. Time put into that community, care for the senior citizens of that community and the children of that community, and many, many of his hard earned dollars. The only reason that was fooled. Was because his wife asked, because she's busy caring for him in his, in his final days now, he's on hospice, so. I don't, I don't think we should be using that as an example, maybe the comp, the justice complex, but we never got to hear that one, so you never got to hear the accomplishments of that individual.
So. So be it. I appreciate that, Commissioner Gray, or Chairman Gray, but it, I, I may have said that, it could have been. The hospital down here in Yarrington then is the example I should have used, so any, any facility. Should be, we should include, let's say if we're gonna rename the hospital here in Yarrington, we should include the stakeholders in that, so. I stand, I stand corrected on, on using maybe that as the example.
Agreed, and actually it's funny you mentioned the hospital because, and Jeff will attest to this, there wouldn't be a Silver Springs Health Center without that individual. So just to let you know how deep his impact was throughout the highway fifty corridor and, but no, I fully agree with you, there needs to be standards, so. Commissioner Hockaday.
Well, I was just gonna say, reading through section three, you know, we're looking for recommendations from. The citizens, which I'm always looking for recommendations from the citizens, however, what you find is that you probably won't come up with. A specific person that everybody appreciates, you know, you'll have maybe four or five people. That'll have somebody they like and another six or seven that like somebody else. It, it does become a problem in that you can't. Really nail down a good recommendation, so. Yeah, I can agree with some recommendations. But the decision, of course, is still gonna have to be made by the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman Gray, if I may, sir, so we have a couple of instances, and this is, some of this is decades old. So I'll use Hilliard Hall as an example in Silver Springs, the Stephen Lehman complex firmly. Those all came from members of the community. Mister Lehman was not deceased when we named the complex after him, he was, was dying, but he had not, he had not been deceased yet. Commissioner Hilliard was still alive and well when we made the. Made the name for Hilliard Hall, but both of those came from members of the community saying, hey, we want this to happen. I agree with Commissioner Hockaday that there are times where, you know. My experience has been the smaller the community, if we're gonna name the, the Smithville Justice Court after somebody at Smithville, we're gonna get a whole lot more debate from the. Community in Smith Valley than we are if we're gonna name something in Dayton after somebody. The smaller the community, the more, the more passion, emotions that there are, right? But again, it comes back to the board as, as to what their final decision is.
We wanna make say, when you say comes from the community, they came in and presented here, or they brought it through their, through a commissioner?
If I recall correctly, Hilliard Hall specifically came through members of the community reaching out to commissioners to, hey, you know.
I mean, that's typically the way things happen.
He has served the, the senior center well, he's been a commissioner, he was the. Business license guy under the sheriff's office, you know, he did all these things for the county, you should name this, firmly was. It came from a variety of sources to the county commissioner, which is, those are two that I can recall. So I, I think that, you know. Getting the community involvement is, is important, the final decision does come back to the board, and I think it kind of focuses. The board as to, you know, naming something over somebody who's truly done something in their respective community. And not necessarily. Somebody that nobody. Has heard of before, I mean, that's, that's the thing about it, right, is, you know, some instances, if you, if you look at the number of, of. Washington High Schools or John F. Kennedy Buildings or whatever, right? You have, you have a wide variety of examples. I, I hope in the future, the, the future boards look specifically at. Local folks who have done some really good things for their community, right, you know, in the hospital as an example, Dr. Mary Fullstone has a wing named that. And Dr. Marvin Beams has a wing named that, because those two physicians were. Wyandell Health Center from nineteen whatever to the change over to South Island Medical Center, and, and so I, I'm hoping that we will continue that tradition.
Chairman Gray, and, and I'm guessing with Mister Hilliard, with some of those. Wings in the hospital, I'm guessing we probably. Did not receive much, if any, negative public feedback, and they thought those were very deserving.
I, I don't remember any negative feedback on Hilliard Hall or after Judge Lehman. The doctor Murray Wing has been around since I was a kid. So I have no idea. I doubt that there was any pushback, and if there was, she probably beat him up, so. She was tough, tough doctor. So we need a motion, sir.
We don't need one.
Chairman Gray, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for adopting policies. For naming facilities, parks, cemeteries, open spaces and drainages as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second, we'll wrap for further discussion.
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair, under section two, the last bullet point. Where it says as required by purchase agreement, is that limiting? What about a lease agreement or some other kind of legal agreement that we may enter into?
I, I don't know that. I don't know that one, we want to lease property ever. So far, we haven't, and number two, I don't know that we want to get tied up in a lease as to. And the reason I put purchase as an example is the, the newest building we built firm, that was part of the, the grant. Requirement was that we gave that Mr. Penn, right, and so that's why that's included in there, so that those folks who. Provide funding to build senior centers, community centers, those kinds of things, they can have name recognition for that contribution.
And, and I think you just made my point, you said it was part of a grant agreement, that's not really a purchase agreement.
Well, we wouldn't have been, that's true, but.
Get out, I just wanted, don't want us to be limited.
We can change the language if it's okay with the motion maker to address purchase agreement or grant agreement.
I'm fine with that, changing that in the motion.
Second still stands, Mr. Hockaday?
No, no comment.
Mister Keller?
Yeah, you know, my, my comment is I. I'm. Always looking for citizens' input on, on anything we do. I have a little bit of problem with section three that the Lyon County Commissioner should make its selection after receiving a recommendation from the Citizen Advisory Board. Words, because. As commissioners, I, I feel that we have a right to bring it to the board. Whether that's naming a ditch, a building or whatever, and we don't really, we have, over the years. We haven't named a lot, honestly. But I think it needs to be left open and not be just the advisory boards, I mean, like when we, you know, the. Justice Complex was brought up, we took public comment from citizens all over Lyon County, not just an advisory board in Mason Valley. The Justice Complex serves all of Lyon County. And we took public comment from everybody on that before making decision. So I don't think we should be limiting ourselves to just what comes as a recommendation from the advisory boards. I kind of agree with. Excuse me, Commissioner Hockaday. That, you know, although we rely very heavily on the citizen advisory boards. Oftentimes, we don't get the input that we would like to see from the advisory boards. So I, I just feel that we're limiting ourselves. And, and I don't think that the county, you know, as a whole, over all the years that I've lived here. Has, you know, went off the rails on naming anything, you know, we've had a couple more recent. Years, you know, like naming the chambers that we're in after Greg Honeywell, after we lost him. You know, the Justice Complex was one of them. There's been a couple of things that were proposed that did not go through. And I, I just feel that we're limiting ourselves with that wording that's in section three.
So does it offer an amendment to that or?
Well, with comment towards that, I guess. So you're saying you don't want to involve the advisory boards on.
I'm not saying not to involve them, I, it, the way I'm reading it, it's like we're relying only on the citizens advisory boards.
The way I, the way I read it is we're including them and we're, if, let's say, I wanna take something to. Rename something in Silver Springs and taking it to the, letting the Silver Springs Advisory Board know about it, and they can talk about it. And give us feedback. I think that's what we're doing a lot of these decisions and what we expect from our advisory boards. I think.
One at a time, real quick.
I think this is a perfect example of, of why not include the advisory boards unless we just want to include them on stuff we want to include them on.
Right, I apologize, I thought you were done. Um, no, I just, I, what I'm saying is I don't want to limit it to, and the reason why you suggested Justice Complex, you brought that up. Earlier, Commissioner Gray did. I wouldn't have wanted to limit that to only say the Mason Valley Advisory Board when the Justice Complex serves all of Lyon County. So, and, and I just felt that the way this reads is kind of like we're going out to just the Citizen Advisory Board. Where the building resides, and, and some of these buildings. You know, are not specific to just a community, some of these buildings, you know, serve all of the county.
And I, I agree with your point on that one.
I, I just felt we were limiting ourselves.
Yeah, things could be able to arise within the board, especially for countywide facilities like the, you know, the Dayton Administrative Complex will be coming up sometime if we decide to name that. You know, I, I think this is probably gonna need more work. I am gonna, I'm gonna exercise my right to rescind my second at that point based on those comments.
Comment. Just, just one comment on, on this, the, the way it reads now, it says should, it doesn't say shall. So it's, it's not blocking us into anything.
And if I may. The Board of Commissioners has, over the years, numerous times. Overruled in the advisory board recommendation. That's the board's right, so that is, this was put in there so that the advisory boards had an opportunity to have a say this to. The, the naming of a building, drainage, whatever it may be, whether it be their community or, or countywide. And to get the information out to the public, so the public in Lyon County knows what's going on in their community, and they have an opportunity to voice their concern. Now, I realize with Zoom, we have a little bit more opportunity for the public to participate in operations from their, from their homes, but the, as has been pushed.
Shannon Saliano, can you please mute your mic?
So that's always exciting.
And it's Halliato, can you please mute your mic?
So it looks like.
Thank you. So. Lost that train went away. Why, it's okay, because at this point, we have, we only have a motion, there's no second, so I think, Mister A, if I'm wrong, I think. Cut off comment at this point and wait to see if there's a second on the, the motion. Is there a second on the motion at this time?
I have a question. You know, Commissioner Jacobson, because you brought this forward, and, and I actually appreciate the fact that, you know, we're trying to put something in writing here. I'm trying to read through this again. You know, sometimes you read something one way and you go back and read it again.
Mr. Keller.
What I'm kind of wondering is maybe we can just tweak the wording a little bit, I'm kind of looking at this. I just felt like it was limiting. I, I like the overall resolution, in other words.
Mr. Keller, can I make a suggestion?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
It allows time to do that. What I'd like to suggest. It allows time to do that. What I'd like to suggest is, so I'm gonna call this motion dead at this point. But what I would like to say is that, that well, I'll just start out there. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting. Give us a little more time to tweak the verbiage, because I do, I absolutely like the fact that we need parameters. But I think it'll give us all a little more time to come back with a little more, and it doesn't have to be next meeting, it could be the following meeting, but come back a little more parameters. There's nothing. Pressing on this one. Would that be a meaningful view, Commissioner Dixon? I'd like to hear the original motion maker and I'd just like to see if you're okay with that.
I don't think it matters. So go ahead and do your thing.
Well, I think we need to just, it'll get ready up, the opportunity to do, take a little more time to tweak it and we're obviously seeing. Issues here that we weren't seeing in the re, in the prior reads.
Right, but if Commissioner, Chairman Gray, if you, if you're wondering. If I'm interested in taking out, going to a local advisory board for their input, I'm not. So. If you think we're going to agree on that down the line, you're mistaken because I still. Excuse me?
It's not what I said, but that wasn't what I was alluding to.
I understand that. I'm addressing the other. Commissioners' concerns.
Oh, you said me directly, sir.
I was, because I'm.
Okay.
Because, so. If you think I'm gonna. I'm not going to be okay with taking out the, you, giving this to the local advisory board because. They are our voice for that area. So I will still be in support of that. I I don't think it give, it doesn't take any power away from us. It just involves them. So. Absolutely, if this, yeah, I don't have a, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't get a second, doesn't pass, that's fine. We all have a vote.
Just clarify my motion. That will give us more time to go back and address Commissioner Keller's concerns. About county buildings in local areas that don't just serve that community. There difference between a senior center and a county administrative complex. So I made a motion to basically table this for, actually, it's tabled to the. My motion, I'm going to amend it, table it till the first meeting in March. Do we have a second on that one?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll open it up for comments and Commissioner Keller's hand just went up.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. I absolutely do not want to eliminate the citizen advisory boards. Please don't misunderstand me. I value their input. I I was just looking at maybe expanding that a little bit more. Because the way I read that. Typically, we would go to only the advisory board where the building resided. And I feel that many of these buildings using the justice complex as an example. That serves all of Lyon County. That if you're going to go out to the citizen advisory board, then we should go to all of them. You know, in other words, you know, the full on public comment across the board. I did, I wanted to expand on it, not take it away.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, open up for further board comments.
I I've just been, you know, kind of stumped on the should make its selection after receiving. I'm kind of in the same. Case here of. I want the recommendations. I just don't think we should make a selection after receiving. So I'm, I've been trying to massage this. You know, as a language arts teacher to see how we expand it, but keep the advisory involved in it. Okay?
Agreed.
Because I believe that they should have as much input as anybody, but there's also people who could come to the commission chambers. So there's a lot of different things I'm looking at here to. I want to keep this, but change maybe two or three words. That's all I was looking at as far as agreeing that let's table it and come back. And then if you agree with kind of the expansion. I'm good with it.
Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I I agree with Commissioner Hockday. I think it's just a matter of words. It could just say it here that. You know, that in any. Any suggested name change would go to. Citizen advisory boards. Yeah, it's all it's got to say, reviewed by the citizen advisory boards and, you know, Mr. Page was absolutely right. Their advisory boards, they are advisory boards, they make recommendations, but the final decision rests with us. So I I I think this is a, an easy fix and.
Yeah, we can do it in two weeks. Nothing, nothing wrong, nothing wrong with doing a reread and absolutely, so.
Let's get it right.
And and again, Commissioner Jacobson, you're absolutely, it's on the right track. It's, and nobody's trying to get you to change your mind. We're just trying to come out with a better product that, you know, the whole world can all agree on. So we're going to go to public comment. Is there anybody in chambers that has public comment? Okay, looks like Leslie Sexton has a comment.
First of all, thank you. Through the chair, I would like to ask the county manager a question, if that's permissible.
Is.
Um, Mr. Page, does the word facilities, the definition of that includes streets and roads?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to see streets and roads included in there with a stipulation that. As in the case of Old Dayton Valley Road, where it's been referred to. The county managers and staff to write up a ballot. Measure. I would like to see a ballot measure, the ballot measure. Stipulate that. In all of these cases in this current resolution. That. The the ballot be put out to only the community served by the particular advisory board. Now, if it turns out that, as in the case of Commissioner Keller talking about the. A county is something that serves the whole county, then yeah, the whole county should vote on it. But in the case of streets that are in a particular advisory board jurisdiction, I think only the citizens. In that area should vote on it. Just as if there were no ballot measure as as is envisioned in this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Sexton. Mr. Tony Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Tony Stevenson from Dayton. Before I make a comment, can I get a point of information? This is a resolution. So will it have the same impact as law? And the reason I'm asking that is because I'm going back to, you know, the revolution resolution. And the constitutional county resolution. Those were. Not on the same level as the law. Will this be the same as a law?
Mr. Wright, do you want to answer that?
Steve Wright DA, this would not be to have the same effect as in ordinance. What I would anticipate if the board approves the resolution, the county manager would implement a county policy. That follows that resolution. So it would have the effect of a policy.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other further public comment?
Mr. Chair, if I could. I needed that information to make my comment.
Hey, you got about a minute and a half there, Mr. Stevenson.
Okay, thank you. There's a couple of sections that I'm really concerned about. The first is under section two, historical or cultural significance. We could have somebody propose that a street be named after Beyonce. Do we really want to have that kind of vague language? In this and also going off of what Leslie Sexton said. We're talking about streets. The streets issue was pretty contentious, as was the renaming of the justice complex. There needs to be some safeguard. Against figures that are considered divisive at the time, especially if there's going to be a minimum twenty-five year. Name change. We're we're talking about, we could name something after somebody who is convicted of multiple crimes in five years. We're not going to look very good with that. And I I think that. This this needs to be. An issue, this is an issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hey, we have a motion on the table and a second. I'm going to call for the vote at this time. All those in favor of. The motion that was put forward, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Mr. Keller, your mic was on mute. Were you, were you and I, if you were, raise your hand?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. So that motion carries five oh. And we will revisit this issue next month. The item sixteen B for presentation and report of eight four county commissioners. On the status of purchasing building a community center in Mount House, in Mount House, that was requested by myself. I'm at a stage.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. I put in the the summary of basically where we are at this point in time, so we understand that the so, the property that was. Deemed to the county, given to the county for a community center is off a Garnet Circle in Mount House. It's approximately two acre lot. Look at. Construction cost today, you know, possibly three hundred dollars a square foot for commercial construction and four thousand. Square foot facility with no amenities. That doesn't include parking or any, any outside. Issues when you're looking at about one point two million dollars to move that forward. I mean, looking at, and I haven't done extensive research, looking at what's available. Building wise in Mount House. I believe it's probably going to be just as expensive to purchase and then remodel building that exists. There aren't, there aren't many buildings that are relatively. Small in size in our house, or it is an industrial area. So that is, doesn't be. Makes problematic. My recommendation at this point in time, be quiet with you is that we hold off doing anything until we have a workshop to discuss. Our priorities on capital and what we're going to be building in the future. Moving forward there. I don't want to kick this can down the road fifteen years. I would like for Melinda Cash actually see a community center. Before she's in the grave, though, just respect Melinda. But you know, I don't want to be kicking it down the road as we have been dealing with for the last twenty plus years. Prior to my time in this position, for Josh Lee's time as a comptroller. This has been been an issue. But that being said, one of the big concerns I have is going through the NDP process for commercial subject in that area. And making, trying to, trying to understand what that process looks like now with new staff on board NDP and a variety of other things. So I would ask that you allow us to continue. Doing investigation as we get some additional information, we'll bring it back to the board. There is no action on this side and it's just a recall discussion. Thank you.
So we will continue that during the the workshop, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Item sixteen C for possible action, presentation, discussion and direction, county manager on the location, supporting road network and funding for a second bridge in the Dayton area.
Speed. On a second, sir. Another hot topic issue for Lyon County and residents. I've already received a number of phone calls. I'm sure you have. As to why are we having this meeting discussing the Dayton Bridge in Yarrington when you should be up here in Dayton? As I explained to them, I would request at the last board meeting, which was in Dayton, to have it on the next agenda. So I'm going to go through what has been, what has happened in the past, where we are today, and I would suggest, I mean, consulting with the the chair that. That the board not take any action today, that we conduct a, maybe an evening meeting in Dayton with this issue specifically, no other issue. In Dayton for the register to have the comment concerns addressed. Especially having it in the evening hours where we get people who are currently at work, who have participated by Zoom or in person that week. So I will begin with my slide presentation and then we'll address any questions or concerns the board and or the public may have. So the history, we've been discussing this issue as far as I know since two thousand and eight. I am certain that. Prior to that, there have been a number of discussions over the time, but the Board of County Commissioners officially took some action in two thousand and eight. To start addressing a second bridge in Dayton. I can remember meetings where we had people, you'll see on a map here, two locations that we discussed, one off Cardelli, one off Chavs and. The Cardelli folks are over here. And the board was getting yelled at. And now I don't anticipate that's going to be any difference. I provided you with several of the studies and reports have been done. It was entertaining reading, put it in the words of Commissioner Keller, it was exciting stuff to read. Reading engineers reports on either one of those. Why are we doing this now? Well, one, we've had a seventeen point seven percent growth rate in Dayton from two thousand ten, two thousand twenty. We've also seen significant traffic increase with the opening of USA Parkway for folks going from Carson. To USA Parkway businesses to go to work every day. Yes, some of those companies are doing bus operations, but many of those folks have chosen not to take the bus and go ride their own vehicle. So we're seeing increased traffic. Both the two thousand ten and two thousand twenty master plans envision a second bridge. Both those master plans have been approved by county. Boards of county commissioners in two thousand ten and then most recently in two thousand twenty. And currently, there is one way in and one way out of Dayton Valley. So last week I get a phone call in the evening from Commissioner Gray. I'm sitting in traffic. There's been an accident Dayton Valley Road and my butt's getting warm. The people are upset that they can't get home because we have one bridge in. That's it. People can't get in and out. My understanding is traffic was backed up on Highway fifty because of that accident as well. So that is why we're discussing a second bridge. There is no popular place to put the second bridge. I get that. So what everybody wants. But they don't want the backup. Okay, so if I may, I apologize for the strange view of the two thousand ten. Master plan, but kind of stretched out. So we envisioned in two thousand ten, if I get this to work. Both Cardella or Cardelli right here and Chavs were, were under discussion in two thousand ten master plan. For access. If you've gone through the material, you will discover the Cardelli ditch is anywhere from ten to twelve spans. And in two thousand eight, that was a million dollars a span. I have no idea what those numbers are today. What I've been informed by Endoc is they no longer go by span. It's about three thousand or, yeah, three thousand dollars per square foot. So I have no idea how many square feet are in a span, but it's a lot. The Chavs is a span and a half. Cardelli makes sense from the, from the aspect that it. When you pass the the ten to twelve spans, it's a direct shot into the east end of Dayton Valley Road. But that's all it is. And now we're dumping truck traffic, potentially all that truck traffic on Dayton Valley Road. The Chavs operation provides us. With further east. And away from the majority of the population, the folks in the Rancho's aren't going to be happy, some of them anyways, because it. It's going to be close to them and they're going to be dealing with traffic issues, noises, those kinds of things. The Chavs operation allows us to build a road network all the way around to. Lake Boulevard as well as eventually. Take Dayton Valley Road to the new road to the bridge, thus allowing. Emergency egress from the Dayton Valley side of the Carson River. On either bridge. And so that was, that was a thought process in two thousand ten in the master plan. You have two options. In two thousand twenty, and I apologize for the smallness of this, but. The master plan. Envisioned the Chavs only. And again, for the, for the same reasons why Chavs makes more sense than Cardelli from the aspect of being able to evacuate both ways out. Not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, just saying that that's. What the the master plan envisioned. And then finally, here's a Google map of, you can see Chavs here and Cardelli here. Cardelli would come across. I've seen all over social media, you're going to drive right over our disc golf course. Probably going to have to come around somewhat. If you look at the river here, how wide it is, and then the number of the offshoots. So it makes it problematic. Chavs up here, you're going to go through some private property across the river and then the road network would come back down around. Which you can't see in this, to Lake Boulevard, potentially Dayton Valley Road come out to it. Again, these are all long term discussions. In regards to the road network, building a bridge is the easy part, but I don't think we want to be like Washington DC and build a bridge that goes nowhere. So the next steps are site identification, pre-engineering, what are our funding options? Right now, we are just, we just received. Right now, we are just, we just received yesterday or day before yesterday, the build, build a better America grant guidance is 400 and some odd pages of it, direct appropriation, ARPA funding. There are a number of things are out there as well as including developers in this discussion and process. You will notice there are a couple of reports in there that are from the development community that they, they paid to have some things addressed and looked at that. We, there's a variety of ways to fund that operation. Then once we've identified pre-engineering and funding options and site identification, then authorizing staff to negotiate public and private landowners, i.e. BLM. Is that part of the lands built discussion is including that property in there. So we own it outright. We don't have to go through, go through these or go through the easement process with BLM. Once those are negotiated, full engineering and then bid for construction and construct. So if I had the money today, if I knew what that magic number was, I had the money today, we're still looking at three to four years before the bridge and road network would be fully constructed. So that's kind of where we are. Short, sweet, to the point. I'll entertain any questions or comments the board has or public may have. Sure.
Quick one for me. So if you were to go to the Chavs, that would totally, that would tie into Lakes Boulevard, not Dayton Valley.
We tied to both.
Okay. How accessible would the Rancho area, the ranchos be to that road? I mean, would they still be fairly secluded and protected? Cause I know one of the, the great concerns is they don't want additional traffic and people and.
So I think that goes back to design and where we're going to put that road network. So if you look at a topo map of the area, we have some pillar areas that are concerned. We have some BLM that are concerned. So. Again, sitting down and engineering what that looks like and how we go, go around that. The original way back when people were very concerned, I can see, I can see trucks from my second story window. I can't conceptualize that in my mind because I was looking at charts and graphs that an engineer drew without looking at any schematics or any modeling of what that actually looked like. So I think that that is still a question that has to be answered is where does that road network go? From the perspective of cost, it's cheaper to build the bridge there, but we still have to build the road there. By concern and fear with Cardelli, this one, it's not wide enough on the other side of the river for traffic. So are we going to want to buy private properties, which I doubt that we can afford that. And then two, now we're dumping all that traffic on Dayton Valley Road, especially truck traffic through Dayton Valley Road. We're on Chav's side. If we can engineer it and address the concerns of the folks in the ranchos, I mean, I'm not gonna guarantee you, we're not gonna make everybody happy. Right? I can, I can still hear that car honking its horn. I, we deal with that on a regular basis, but if we can engineer it so that we address the majority of those concerns, it makes better sense to use the Chav's property, build the road network. And now you have access for truck traffic to get to the Dayton industrial side of things, vehicle traffic to be able to go up and down Dayton Valley Road, especially for those folks that live on that side of the river that are working in USA Parkway or have business east of Dayton. They're not having to go to the bridge, hang a right and then go all the way down, trying to reduce that traffic. The, the next part of this discussion is, and they're pipey after I'm dead and buried is what do we do with the north side of Dayton and creating, for lack of a better term, a midterm Boulevard around Dayton to keep local traffic going to grocery store, those kinds of things off Highway 50. We talked about the traffic access we have on a regular basis. One of the ways of dealing with that is, is developing an internal road network that the county operates and maintains to keep local traffic off Highway 50 unless it's actually necessary. So there's, there's more to this picture than just the bridge, but this is one piece of that pie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Page. And I, I do like the idea of having a meeting out in Dayton because this, this is a very complex issue and it's a very needed issue. It's a safety issue. And one reason why I think that the timing is, is right for this is because the federal government is just spearing money on a lot of different things. I'm not exactly a fan of that, but if the federal government's going to be giving away money, then we ought to get Lyon County share of it. And that might be a way to get this bridge and road network funded. So that's where I want us to look at possibly is, is get as much federal funding for this as we possibly can. And I look forward to the, the conversations and the, and the discussions about where and how the, the bridge and the road network, because building a bridge by itself doesn't really solve anything.
No, no, it does not.
I mean, yeah, it looks pretty and hey, we could have a whole, I'm not even gonna say what I was gonna say. I'm gonna be nice. Oh no, well, we'd have a whole conversation about naming it.
Anyways, I'm sorry. Any other commissioners have any comments? Hey, uh, this is a, this is an action. Yes. So we'll go ahead and open it up at this point for community comment, public comments. Please keep your comments to three minutes. You'll, and you'll have to come up and sign in and identify yourself. Keep your three minutes. And if you could, please don't repeat somebody else's argument. Try and keep it, you know, new and fresh and give us the whole perspective, not repeat the same thing.
And Mr. Chair, we ask you, please print your name so we can actually read it when we.
Yeah, thank you.
Print your name.
Thank you. I am a resident of the ranches we're talking about and having lived there for quite some time now.
Could you state your name, please, sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Craig Scher. I live the, within the Palmstock or east of. The problem with the second bridge locations, it doesn't help any of us that live south of the river. It's too far east for most of us to be able to utilize that bridge other than maybe a second way in or out if there's an emergency, which I understand. But for the most part, we need access to the shopping center via access to the whole area in central Dayton, not so far east that it doesn't make a difference to us which direction we go. We still have this big giant loop to get to the central part of Dayton. So I would much rather see a bridge more towards the central area, perhaps where the new government center is going to go in across the golf course, you know, somewhere that would really help everybody to live south of the river. I just can't really see a massive use of that East Bridge. It's just too far east. It's just, it would be an emergency bridge only really for most people. I mean, sure, there'll be some people that need to head east for their jobs or what have you, but most of us, I imagine, work and shop in Dayton or west into Carson or further west. So we would all still be using the West Bridge for almost all of our needs anyway. So if, if a bridge more central would be built, that would be way more helpful. That's all I had to say. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? If you could, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a public comment, if you could just line up over here and when you'd up there, state your name and then please print your name for the record.
For the record, my name is, legal name is Kathleen McDonald. You can call me Katie or hey, you've been called works. I totally agree with this last gentleman. And I, I think I have never made a count, but I think there's close to 200 homes. Mr. Gray, you asked, I'm not in the ranches. I am on the north side of Dayton Valley Road and I'm one of those, I'm the second house past Sutro. So my question to Jeff would be, and maybe it's too soon. If you come down Dayton Valley Road, that's a pretty narrow road. And I would bet with all the homes there, you would find very few people that would utilize that. Rich out east and that would actually want four lanes coming down Dayton Valley Road. Did I misunderstand that? That it was my understanding, it was going to be a four lane road? Is that correct?
Ma'am, this is a public comment at this point. They're not, I mean, the staff's not really gonna engage in give and take, but you bring up the issue and it's something that'll be looked into.
Okay. Without us, my understanding, and maybe it's too soon to ask questions, but I have a little over two acres. And I'm wondering if, in fact, to go down Dayton Valley Road, I've already read where, you know, you might pursue securing easements. So does that include private land? Are you looking at eminent domain and taking our property? If you go down past the last subdivision, which is Quillacy goes back to one, well, two lane road, but single, you know, road is not real wide. So where are you going to go if you come down Dayton Valley Road with a four lane? Row. Which is my, one of my questions.
Good things that need to be considered. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. How are you guys today? Thank you for being here. Thanks for doing this for us. Russ Herring for the record, and we're residents out there in the ranches. I basically have two things. One, I'm glad you guys can bring it to Dayton. Thank you for suggesting that, Jeff. And two, the question is, does Dayton Valley Road have to be integrated to that bypass? If there's something you guys could look at where Lakes Boulevard is the entrance and exit it for your. Bypass going around out there, that would alleviate a lot of our concerns. We police ourselves. We've been working with deputies. We do our own. We've been. We catch a lot of people casing us out there looking to steal from us. We got eyes all over the place, pebbles, stout, a lot of deputies work with us. We turn in over license plate cars. We're doing a lot for ourselves and we do really enjoy being at the end of the road. And it would negatively impact us. And I know that you guys are all aware of that. We're also very aware that life goes on and people come and building needs to be done. And we want to help be a part of the solution to that. We understand that Cardelli can be an issue and Chavez has its pluses. And for us, it would be a negative in some impact. I guess what we're hoping for is to work with you guys and come up with a solution that basically leaves us alone and allows us to continue to live the life that we've chosen to live out there at the end of the road, undisturbed. And. We wish you guys all the best of luck.
Thanks, Russ. It ain't easy.
My name's Mike Mason. My address is actually on Dayton Valley Road. Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Henderson pulled into my house. You know where I live. I wasn't aware of the proposal going from Lakes Boulevard that circle navigated, that circle navigates our whole area. Doesn't sound nearly as bad as what I've heard. But I know when they were talking about flood mitigation, they're talking about basically where you're talking about a road going around, putting a levy up to keep the. Rainwater from coming down out of the hills. If it can be incorporated to, to put that road on a levy, it might get both things done for a fraction of the cost of doing it individually. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for a public comment? Anybody online? Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tony Stevenson, Dayton. This is an issue that we've been talking about more than 20 years here. Certainly needed, sometimes desperately needed. My question is though, that there's going to be a lot of pushback, it sounds like, from the folks that are going to be impacted by this the most, whether it's Chavez or Cardelli, and then the changes to Dayton Valley Road. I know that this is just the beginning of the discussion, but what is the plan to handle all of the pushback? I mean, is, is the Chavez Road being looked at because there's going to be a lot of development on the other side of the Carson River? Is it being looked at for expediency going through the ranchos? It's certainly gonna cause. I think some anger, but you know, what is the plan going forward? Cause you've also got to consider flood plains, getting more land, it sounds like. Thank you.
Hey, Tony. Okay. It looks like we've got all the public comment. I would like to say, you know, since, uh, you know, the federal government has declared that the, I forgot about this. They declared the Carson River is navigable. Maybe we should just get a barge. I'm sorry. There you go. All right. Um. Can we name the barge? So this was, I mean, this was a possible action actually to be taken. It looks like we're gonna continue it until a workshop, put together a workshop or something in Dayton. So thank you all for showing up and providing your comments. And we look forward to hearing more and trying to come to an answer that's gonna, it's gonna piss off everybody equally, I guess is the best way to say it. So thank you all. And I'm gonna ask my fellow board members at this point, do you guys want to push on or do you guys want to go to lunch? I see we got cookies up here. So. Okay. Commissioner Keller, you got any preference?
No, I don't care if you guys push forward, but if you're going to take five minutes and we'll finish.
Go on, take five then.
Thank you.
Let's take five and then we'll reconvene. Let's take five and then we'll reconvene. Okay. Okay, item sixteen D. Ma'am. Item sixteen D. For possible action discussed and provide direction to the county manager in regards to developing a BDR for the twenty twenty-three legislature. Which may include discussion of possible topics for BDR, direction to staff to research and come back with information related to a possible BDR. And input from the public on possible topics for BDR. The board may direct staff fair resolution and bring it back to the board for further consideration. This was requested by Commissioner Henderson, so I will turn it over to Commissioner Henderson at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. And the reason I wanted to start this conversation. Is that you know, each legislative session, we are authorized to submit one bill draft request. There in, you know, my experience, there are several different reasons to introduce a bill draft request. You know, one, you're trying to solve a problem, which is was the most common. Second reason for a builder after quest is just to bring attention to an issue. You know, it's not going to pass, but you need to get it on the legislature's radar. Then another reason is to send a message to the legislature, like, hey, you messed up. But I figured, yeah, I I believe. I I think September first is the deadline for us to submit a BDR. So I figured it would be prudent for us to start the discussion on, you know, if we want to submit a BDR this session and if we do want on. And to get input from the board so that we can give direction to staff to do any research that we need. So that that's why I asked for this to be brought forward.
Thank you. Paige, I know you've got any input on this and I'm sure Commissioner Keller will as well.
Jeff Page, County Man for Record. Um, my comment is that if the board wants a specific BDR. That between now and September, we we clear direction on what we wanted that and that we better just publicly. I don't want SB P nine nine scenario coming back to bite me the backside or we go in and. Cause we've done this three times now, where we have a bill draft that we put in and we do the public pressure after the fact. The board passes a resolution to pull the BDR and let's figure it's not happening. We need to. You don't need decisions today, but what is it you want to address and how do you want to address that issue? Something, some hot topic things that I suggest that we may not want to get too much involved in. And you just received an email from a gentleman in Fernley in regard to C tax. I don't know that we want to open that C tax discussion up. Because when we do, the folks down south like we generate seventy-four percent of the of the sales tax, we want to keep thirty-four percent of the money. There may be, if you're looking at taxation, addressing. Property tax issues and cleaning up some of the language in there so that we at least have a consistent, sustainable income flow. I'm not saying change a three percent cap or anything like that. But on the, as an example, one bill draft could be on resale of a property. It resets because right now it doesn't. If if my house, which is built nineteen fifty-one sells today, whoever buys it tomorrow. Is paying the same taxes out of play instead of resetting those kinds of things. You may have some issues that you want to address dealing with. Giving the the county more authority to make decisions on whatever issues. Let us know what that looks like so we can do some research and get back to you as to what that is. Naco tried very hard and the legal city tried very hard to get us some more functional home rule. I'm not certain that what's in law now. Doesn't really mean anything. Basically, what it says, if it's not covered by statute, a county can develop an ordinance to address it. With these with these exceptions. Wow, it doesn't really give us much of anything. And I don't know that the board truly wants true home rule. Because then you're the ones that are responsible. We can't let legislature when they raise taxes, those types of things. If you're the ones that have true home. So. In the past, the board is, you know, he wanted to deal with a specific issue. We put together language, the board says, yeah, that's what we want to do. And unfortunately, the board, after they got. Cause they waited to the last minute after they got heat in the public, they wanted to pull the bill after it already been introduced. So my suggestion is, is that between now and then. The second meeting in August, that the board gives clear directions to what we want.
I've said this many times before, get a BDR that goes in and says. Instead of a hundred and twenty days every two years, let's have two days every hundred and twenty years. That would be a much better approach to our legislative sessions.
I second that one. Okay, uh, can I go to Commissioner Keller here real quick first? Mr. Keller?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, Commissioner Henderson, thanks for putting this on the agenda. I actually, you know, brought this up a few meetings back. Under a commissioner comments about we should start, you know, thinking, do we want to put in a BDR or not? Lyon County, many sessions has not. And I was actually going to bring up the scenario that Jeff has already brought up that, you know, BDRs get submitted and then we vote to. Not do them. And then we fight like a dickens to get a hold because. What happens is his lying county's name is now on a BDR and if we don't want it, then somebody else will gladly hijack it for us. So. I, uh, Mr. Page mentioned, you know, by the middle of August. I would suggest that if we are going to seriously look at any. Issues that we want to address, whether we do it or don't do it, that we don't wait till August. We need to look at those things now because there's usually a lot of background information that needs to be obtained. Before we make a final decision, I would hate to throw an idea out there in the middle of August. Sounds great on the surface. We say, hey, yeah, let's do it. And then when we get all of our background information. We would be in that same position of going, oh, wait a minute, maybe we don't want to do this. I would like to, you know. Work, I guess, more in the next, say, hundred and twenty days. Of identifying the items that you think could be an issue that you would like on a BDR. So that we can start eliminating the bad ones right off the get go and and then go from there. Uh, and if we end up not putting in a BDR, we don't put one in. But I'd rather, if we do do it, that it's something that we as a board can unanimously get behind. And so that's just my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson in?
Nothing yet.
Thank you. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments at the end. I I want to comment on Mr. Page's comment about the bill on C tax. No. I have nightmares on bills on C tax still to this day. Because, you know, C C tax is a complicated issue and it's a set pie. So if you're gonna give anybody to get C tax more money, it has to come from somebody else and they're just, it's not the bill that I I want to play with. Well, one of the things I was I was thinking of and. You know, we had a discussion at our presentation in our last meeting from the sheriff's department about revolving door at the jail. And it might be something we want to do, see if we can, you know, get get a change in that. Process or at least make the legislators aware of the. The challenges and the problems that we are facing now as a result of their actions in this last session. You know, maybe what we need to do is have a workshop on this or maybe just. Put out a request to all the county commissioners on on any items and not not these county commissioners, but county staff as well. Not any items that that we might want to do and then have, bring the thought in back once we have some ideas to to discuss and like Commissioner Keller said. Get rid of the bad ones right away and then see what we can, we can all get behind and and push. And I agree with her too. If we don't have, if we don't submit a BDR, that's okay too. Because, you know, there's over a thousand BDRs submitted every legislative session and there is no way. They can be properly vetted and considered and debated in a hundred and twenty day sessions, so. If we have a reason to submit one, I'm all for it. If we don't, then we can just lean back on on Naco and see what they do.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So hearing listeners specifically, I would say the board wants to discuss. We will leave this as a standing agenda item until the board says, A, either A, this is the bill we want, or B, we don't want to build. So we'll leave this on the future agendas as a standing agenda item.
Can we do that as every other agenda item? Like. Every other agenda item. Dangling participials, you know. He's my, he's my English guy. He'll he'll correct me, he'll get me. Yeah, so if we do that, that'd be great. Unless there's a motion on the table, anybody want to make a motion? Any public comment on that? All right, pushing on to items.
Mr. Chair, before we leave this issue, if Commissioner Henderson or Commissioner Keller would reach out to Naco and find out. If they're, they already have some ideas of what they're going to be doing. So I don't want to have happen is we come up with a bill and the Naco is like, yeah, we're going to do it.
Mr. Page on on that, if I may, Mr. Chair. I I reached out to to Naco already. Their legislative committee is going to start meeting next month. So, and both Commissioner Keller and I sit on that. So once they start meeting. I will be happy to report to this board on a monthly basis what's being discussed to the Naco Legislative Committee.
All right, thank you, sir.
All righty, item seventeen A, district attorney, possible action, A, execution of subdivision settlement, participation forms. And releases pursuant to the one Nevada agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries, one Nevada agreement. Previously agreed upon for for participation in settlements with one, the state of Nevada and opioid distributor defendants. AmerisourceBerserker Drug Corporation, Cardinal Health and McKesson, as listed in exhibit C, the one Nevada agreement and two. The state of Nevada and opioid manufacturer defendant Jansen Johnson and Johnson. As listed in exhibit C to one Nevada agreement and B, execution of amendment number one to one Nevada agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries. Regarding a reduction in attorney's fees to the one Nevada agreement for purposes of these two settlements only. God, I think that was written by a lawyer.
Yeah, it sure sounds like it. Seabri District Attorney's Office. I'm here today. The county is represented by a law firm out of Las Vegas in this particular matter. In combination with the Nevada Attorney General, they've asked that this be brought before the board for consideration today. And some of the board members will remember several years ago, the county was approached. To join with some other local governments in Nevada. To file a lawsuit regarding the opioid epidemic in Nevada. And so Lyon County agreed to do that. In Lyon County, Central Lyon Fire, North Lyon Fire, the city of Fernley have also done that. They are partying to the same case. The state of Nevada's are not the same case. They've all filed separate cases, but they're. Similar, similarly situated. The Nevada Attorney General and the state of Nevada have also filed suit. And it's been recommended by the Attorney General and the Attorney for the county that. That this board accept the settlement with these distributors. And this is one piece of litigation. It's a third, basically, there's manufacturers, distributors and. Retail pharmacies. And this is one piece. They recommend that the county executes these agreements that are attached. To the agenda to settle this one portion. Answer any questions?
So was there a reduction in legal fees?
There was a reduction in legal fees and this is a question I knew would come up. I don't know what the exact numbers are. For Lyon County or the other entities in Lyon County. But there will be a reduction in the total amount of attorney's fees related to this portion. And also, the allocation will roughly near what the allocation was in Nevada. This, the amount for this settlement, I believe, is two hundred and eighty-five million for all of the.
For Nevada. And are we bound on how that money can be used? Is there kind of a binding agreement that says we have to use this money for this, that or the other?
There are limitations on how the money is used. That's part of the settlement.
Any other commissioners' comments? Mr. Keller? Any public comment? All right.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Chairman Gray. Mr. I, so sometimes when you get a. Mr. Rye, so sometimes when you get some money, you put it towards you're supposed to. And then it's sort of like supplanting. So if we move, if they give us guidelines on where we can spend that money, can we move that money out? Or do we, is it one of those where if you've been spending this, you can't reduce that, you can just add to that money?
That's probably a question that's outside of my scope a little bit. Maybe Shayla wants to chime in, but some of the grants that the county may receive do have the supplanting restrictions on that. So they wouldn't be able to take money out of that, but I think they would be able to spend this additional money over and above whatever the grant money is. That, I don't know if that answered your question exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, there won't be a limitation on how much you can spend in any certain area. There is work to be done on the county side with this money because those resources and services where the money needs to be spent may not all be in place. So there is a little bit labor will involve Shayla's department as well as other county departments to get get that set up.
So what's that again? Grant to grant? You can supplant?
Granted.
Just remember, there's no such thing as a grant.
This attorney, right? So I, and I guess where I was getting, I mean, could we use this too? And I always get the most team, the fast team screwed up. Would this be able, be money to be able to help support the most team and maybe augment it and?
That would certainly, those are two programs we would certainly be looking at.
Okay, so both of them.
Right, fast and most. Juvenile probation also would be a program we're looking at. And we honestly, we haven't had internal discussions with the county manager and the other departments to figure out how that will be done because we we don't know exactly when it's coming and how it's going to work.
How about Winrick?
Winrick's a possibility too. I don't know about that, but.
I mean, most of those kids that want to go in there have some kind of issue and that may be the only opportunity they ever have to address it.
Right, no, that it's certainly a fit. The program's a fit, very valuable program for for the counties.
Was Douglas supporting this?
Yes.
Some, so it might be opportunities there to discuss it with them also and maybe shore up Winrick and get some services in there. So looking for a motion at this point regarding this agenda item.
Mr. Chair, I move that we was the motion here. Did we approve amendment number one to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries as presented by staff?
Second.
It's a motion to approve those two items in there, but if you approve, motion to approve this presented.
Seventeen.
And then authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, then I will amend my motion to what you said.
Yeah.
So the motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve is presented.
Same second.
There we go. Biden, did you hear that? Okay?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further word comment? Any public comment? Not a whole lot of public out there anymore except on Zoom. Not seeing anybody on Zoom or in-house, so we'll take the vote at this time. All those in favor of approving item seventeen A is presented, signify by saying aye. And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Item eighteen A, possible action, close ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title V, Chapter five point oh one point oh two by prohibiting the licensing of a cannabis consumption lounge as a business. Title seven, chapter two, by prohibiting the consumption of cannabis and cannabis products in a public place and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof and other matters properly relating thereto. Steve, are you doing this one? Who's going to Jeff? Oh, community development. There we go. Should have known you get.
Andrew Haskins, Lyon County Community Development Director for the record. I got about a two hour presentation on this today. Just kidding. This is a quick one. Motion pretty much takes most of what what is in this ordinance, but essentially it would amend two sections of county code title five, which would prohibit the business licensure cannabis consumption laws in title seven, which would prohibit consumption of cannabis products in a public place.
Any more comments, questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second part of this kind of confuses me. I understand what you're trying to do, but that really, to me, applies more to leaf or marijuana itself and not cannabis products. So how are you going to stop somebody in public from from eating a gummy? I mean, to me, it's just unenforceable, the way the way it's written.
And I think the intent here is just to put something on the books about it so that if somebody happens to if law enforcement happens to this, then they can enforce it.
Mr. Jacobson.
I would agree with Mr. Haskins. I mean, there's posted speed limit signs of fifty-five and people are going sixty. That's something that they can enforce. See someone smoking marijuana, they can enforce that. If you see them passing a gummy, you can ask about it, you can do whatever. But again, I don't know that all these I think having this language absolutely does not hurt. It may not prevent it from happening. I don't think any language is going to prevent it from happening. So I think we're, I think that might be a difficult ask.
Yeah, if I may. Like I said, I did this section just kind of bothering me. And what about people that have medical authorization to use? Something that can they use it in public? Some type of like, you know, a tincture or this, I said, you know, inhaled or I can't read my mic. My print went away. So I can't quite read it, but when I read it online, it's just confusing to me. I'm I guess, you know, there's a lot of laws that are confusing and a lot of laws aren't enforceable. I just, I just really have trouble with that second section.
And I should point out that this ordinance language was provided by the District Attorney's Office.
And I, well, and that's, I mean, I think that's a good point. I think that leads it up to judicial discretion and law enforcement discretion on the scene. I mean, you could tell if somebody's using it medically typically by the situation as opposed to they're in a crowd at a concert and they're popping gummies left and right, you know, I
Yeah, like I said, the law would come down from that. I mean, yeah, okay, like I said, I think it's unenforceable, but doesn't have, doesn't mind if it's in there. It's all good.
Hey, we have a yeah, we're looking for a motion to to approve it.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry.
I think we're only proposing this ordinance today.
Yeah, so I said, we're looking for motion.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll propose it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Item number nineteen, agenda request. We will start at the right end with Commissioner Hockaday.
I'm finished for today. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, not at this time. Commissioner Keller?
I want it all. So Jeff, get to work. I want everything. No, actually, I have nothing at this time.
Okay, I have one, and it doesn't have to necessarily be for the next meeting, but for the following meeting. I think we need to take a look at that in light of all the election changes. I think our, we need to take a look at our primary election signs in general and see if we need to amend that. Yeah, I mean, looking at it right now with the way the timeline is, the election is effectively over for this next one at the end of April. So that doesn't give a whole lot of time to have your signs out there or do the things you need to do. So I'd like to see a discussion and possible action on that one to change that. That's that, is that set ordinance or is that just a policy? It's ordinance. Okay, so change that ordinance.
Is it, isn't it an NRS as well?
I'd have to verify.
That maybe a BDR.
Yeah. I'm okay with changing and going against it. I mean, signs do not go on anywhere but private property. So, you know, I think you talk about unenforceable. I mean, that's unenforceable, but I think we need to take a look at it. Mr. Rye.
Steve Rye DA, in response to Commissioner Henderson, there are some state requirements also dating back with campaign signs.
And
mainly along state highways, but some other restrictions also. So the county manager can get a summary of those and then also what our ordinance is and how long that's been.
And actually, where I was going, I was thinking about rescinding this altogether because there is NRS out there. And as long as you're up there, I'll ask you, how is it the state can enforce something on private property facing a state highway?
You know, I don't know exactly how they do it on the private property, but those.
It's never on public, but you can't put signs on public property.
Yeah, no, I, they do though.
But that's
I mean, they've, especially in Fernley, they take the signs and you pick them up at the end of the.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's nearly unenforceable unless you're putting your sign in someplace that doesn't belong.
That's right.
So it's, and that's usually the county right away or the state right away. So and actually, so I wanted to amend that real quick. If I'd like to take a look at rescinding the county ordinance on that since there is NRS and it's unenforceable on private property. That is all I have at this point. Commissioner Jacobson?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners' comments. We will start, let's go to Zoom. Commissioner Keller?
I just wanted to say, you know, it's been an enjoyable meeting today. Sorry I stayed home, but Zoom worked very well. What was that, Ken?
Nothing, nothing.
Okay. Anyways, um, you know, I don't really have anything. I, you know, I want to thank Commissioner Henderson again for stepping in for me last week with Naco and stuff. Yeah, wasn't feeling too great and don't know if I could have really remembered or retained anything from the meeting that day if I had attended. So thank you very much. And I think that's about it for today. Just everybody have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Keller, you're more than welcome. You know, I have a soft spot in my heart for Naco and love to participate with them any chance I get. I don't really have anything else, just, you know, off to a good start. Let's keep going.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson?
Chairman Gray, I'm fine as is. Thank you.
Mr. Hockaday?
Nothing here again.
All I've got is, will you guys be my Valentine? It's coming up real soon. No. Do we have a closed session today, Mr. District Attorney?
No.
Oh, thank you. This is like two meetings in a row. That being said, we'll go to final just public participation. Anybody out there with public participation bringing that was not on the agenda? Are we down to one screen, Jeff?
So I got.